Planning Commissions, over those who don't know me, welcome. They're all here, those of you from the other boards and commissions and others. Before we get started, I need to read the required statement for to hold an electronic meeting. So, the meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-37 or 8.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc, as well as on Falls Church City Television, which you can find on Cox Channel 11, RCN Channel 2, and Verizon Bios Channel 35. Public comments for any items tonight will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit those comments to the following email address. And so with that, I'm officially calling to order the Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, meeting of the Falls Church City Planning Commission. And the first order of business is to call the roll. Please, Ms. Bazemore.
Yes, Mr. Costner.
I am here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Pruntes will be absent tonight. Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Ms. Colmott?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So, we've established who's here. We have a quorum. And the next order of business is to formally adopt the agenda. I personally didn't have any concerns with the order of the agenda tonight, the way staff has laid it out. And if, so if no one else has any changes or revisions, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. A second.
Got a motion by Ms. Weiss and a second by Ms. Teetz. Do we need a roll call vote? I believe we do.
Yeah. Mr. Costner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Colmott?
Yes.
Okay, great. So with that, we will proceed through the agenda as published. There are no speakers for the speaker series tonight. The next item is, as always, receipt of any petitions for items not on the agenda. Any such petitions?
No.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we will again proceed to action items. And these are items that, again, we had the work session on last time. So this will be the public hearing and action for these items, although I believe that staff will explain one of these items is going to need to be deferred. And so should we get that out of the way first, Mr. Stoddard? Announce which of these items is being deferred, or just take them in order?
That's correct, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. The, maybe I'll introduce all four items and as part of that, explain the staff's recommendation for deferring one of them. So the items that are before you are the Planning Commission's final actions on, related to a variety of West Falls Church items for the economic development site. It's to hold public hearings and make recommendations to council on an amendment to the special exception entitlement, as well as the final recommendation on Phase 1 of the special exception site plan, which are listed as Item 6A in your agenda. Item 6B is a lot line adjustment, and that's to adjust the property boundary between the school's owned land and the area for economic development. It's a portion of the trapezoidal parking lot. That is the item that staff is recommending that you all defer to a date certain. The reason for the deferral, recommendation for the deferral, is that the schools don't have a signature on the application yet, or the, an agent of the schools doesn't have a signature on it yet. And so typically for land use items, you need a signature of the property owner, so we're recommending deferral. The third item, 6C, I guess the fourth item, 6C, is a recommendation to council on the land acquisition. That recommendation can still go forward tonight. I guess what I'm going to do actually is just turn it over to the case planner.
She closed her also.
Turn it over to Carly Aubrey. She's a principal planner with the city, and she's the case planner on it. And I'm going to, the materials are largely the same as you all saw in your recent work session, and of course, as the community has seen in numerous town halls. So I'm actually going to ask Ms. Aubrey, just to give a brief summary of, you know, the reasons for this project, the goals from the comprehensive plan, a brief summary of what's in the project, and then the public process that's been used to get to this point tonight. Ms. Aubrey?
Thank you. Good evening, council. So, the staff report does lay out a pretty comprehensive history of the site and of the project. And it also discusses the submissions that we've received for the special exception entitlement amendment and the special exception site plan for Phase 1, as well as a staff analysis of the project against the comprehensive plan and the SCE code, as well as site plan code. And so, as Paul mentioned, comprehensive goal, plan, sorry, comprehensive plan, goals and policies were set for this area in 27, or 2018. And so this project has been reviewed against those and is in substantial compliance with those. The goal of this project was to develop a mixed-use development project to offset the expenditures of building a new high school. And so this project does, would accomplish that. There's approximately 399 apart, dwelling unit apartment building, around 128 unit condo building, a senior housing component, office, retail, and a hotel with a common open space. And so this mixed-use project will not only enliven that area, but bring up substantial benefits to the city. In terms of where we have been and where we're at, the SCE application was submitted and approved in 2018. And then the special exception, these new applications were submitted last year. Since the original some, or application submissions, there have been substantial public engagement through either city council work sessions, meetings, planning council meetings. It has gone to all the boards and commissions, and there have been town halls as well. So I would just point out, I guess finally, next steps actually would be, there's been some topic-specific work sessions with council. There is one this Monday where the focus was urban design, environment. Actually, urban design got kicked to this Monday, but what was discussed this past Monday was the environment and transportation elements of the project. This coming Monday will focus on urban design and fiscal impact. And then May 3rd will be discussing ADUs, affordable dwelling units, and voluntary concessions. And then an action hearing is tentatively scheduled by council for May 24th. So the recommendation for Planning Commission tonight is provided, and there are some recommendations included in that for your consideration to forward on to council related to items that staff would like to see incorporated into future submissions. So with that, I can take any comments. We do have the development team here, and we have their presentation from the work session a couple of weeks ago available, if people want to have that pulled up, have any questions. Otherwise, myself and the development team are here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Aubrey. I guess the first thing we'll start off with is if many commissioners have any questions for staff, or I suppose for the applicant as well, but if there are any questions from commissioners on this. See, hands raised, sorry. Mr. Stevens has his hand raised.
I do, thank you. I did, when I was going through all the documents, I did come up with a couple of questions, realizing that we're at the end of the road here, so it's not the opportunity to launch into new areas, but just a couple of quick items. This one might be for Ms. Aubrey. Regarding the tree pits and the vegetation and that, is that something that the, that the developer will be taking care of?
Yeah, so in the voluntary concessions, there is an item that talks about streetscape and landscaping would be, with the exclusion of paying for electricity and the streetlights. Everything else would be maintained by the developer.
Okay, good. There was a question that had come up somewhere in the document, so I'm glad to hear that. I think that's the, by far, the best solution. Then the other question maybe for Mr. Goldman has to do with those bike paths going through the commons. Is there any chance that we could include a two-foot buffer, since the bike lane is going to be next to the parked cars, and we know that the safety issues that that can give rise to? Sometimes you do see an additional, maybe about a two-foot buffer placed there to provide some additional protection. I'm just wondering, is that a possibility for these bike lanes?
So that, that's a good question. So we, as we were looking at kind of bike lane widths, there's obviously different options. We went with a six-foot wide stripe bike lane, which is a pretty wide bike lane versus a four-foot or a five-foot. Partially for that reason, if you, you know, the more narrow bike lanes do create more of the dooring opportunities, whereas a six-foot kind of gives you both the clearance for that bike facility, as well as some of the space to get away from the door. We don't have room in the street section to widen that. It's an interesting question, you know, physically, could you paint the two-foot and four-foot zones slightly different colors or something? You know, the idea right now is for them to paint it green, I think, but could you paint them different or stripe it differently, so there's kind of the clear bike zone and then the buffer zone seen separately? That might, that might be a good way to get to what you're thinking.
Yeah, I'm by no means an expert, and I'm sure there's others who could provide a better informed opinion than my own, but just in my own experience, where you do have these bike lanes that are up against parked streetcars, if there's something there to indicate to the driver that, you know, hey, there's something special going on here, and that could be that cross-hatched buffer zone, I think it's a pretty good chance that that would, would help in terms of bicycle safety. So if there's a way to do that, I think that would be, would be for the good.
Yeah, that's a good point. So let Robin and I, we can talk to our civil engineer and understand, you know, if that's allowed, what the implications would be and how that might work.
Great, thank you very much. Other than that, I think that's all I had. I do wanted to, I just wanted to say to Ms. Aubrey, I appreciate the additions that you put into the proposed motion there, so I think those are, those are excellent. And so thank you for those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other commissioners have any, any comments or kind of questions on this? I think Mr. Stevens summed it up. We're kind of at the end of the road on this to some degree. It's been, we've seen this, you know, through, through the process. And so mutting any other hands raised. Oh, Ms. Weiss just popped up.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to, we have a late-breaking comment from the Urban Forestry Commission on the tree planters, so I just wanted to ask about that. There was a, I guess, a discussion about, the UFC is recommending edged tree planters, so I wanted to get the applicant's view on that. If that's...
Yeah. Evan, do you have enough information to answer that question about edged tree planters versus what we have now?
Sorry, I'll mute. I'm wanting to understand the question exactly, so.
The Urban Forestry Commission sent a comment rather late indicating that the arborist has recommended that the planters along Broad Street and Haycock have edges around them rather than being flush. And I have to admit that this came in late, so I skimmed it, but they're, they're asking for flushed tree planters, recommending the use, sorry, not flush, edged planters and to be consistent with the streetscape standards, so.
That's counter to what we, you know, we've, we had a number of meetings where we discussed this type of streetscape with staff. Carly, you may remember. I think that's counter to what we had heard from staff, that they wanted them to be flush, because that was a whole conver, I think there was a whole conversation about that a number of months ago during the SCE and the SESP initial process, where I agreed, I think there were some different, different opinions among staff.
Uh huh. And there were different opinions on the streetscape task force as well.
Yeah, because at one point we had them raised, they were kind of raised on, and into the slope, and that got rejected because there was a desire for them to be flush. Yeah, I'll admit, I'm not familiar enough to know the drawbacks, the benefits, the negatives, but I think we were instructed to keep them flush for the standard, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think there was a discussion when we developed the streetscape standards of having them flush when there wasn't enough room on the sidewalk, but if there was enough room, the 20-foot from the curb, then, then the raised edges seem to be preferred, but I get your point, that it's not real clear in the streetscape, streetscape standards.
Well, Cory, I guess, do you, if you're saying that this comment has been submitted, is it going to come to us through Carly? Because we'd be happy to also look into this a little bit more with our consultant team, and then get back to, back to the tree commission with, with a full, fully written answer, so.
It was shared with Planning Commission, so I won't speak for Ms. Aubrey, but.
I think it just came in, just saved it, so. Maybe they definitely didn't get it.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay, okay.
I'll certainly forward it along though.
So I think understanding kind of the background and some ambiguity maybe within the streetscape standards, we will look into the, exactly what they're asking more and be able to get it back to you more fully with, with the comment coming to us, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Good, thank you, Ms. Weiss. I didn't see anybody else, I mean, the only questions I had, actually, I would just really be interested to hear from the applicant, their responses to the staff recommendations, I mean, particularly the LEED scorecard recommendation, and, you know, what, how the applicant plans to address these moving forward, or what their responses to those.
Your question is about the energy comments from the scorecard?
Right, right.
Hang on one second, sorry, I didn't have that full slide pulled up for this, so one second.
You've seen the comment, calling out that the hotel and the office scorecards are low, and that there, there are continued opportunities to improve those buildings in that regard, so, I mean, I'm sure you've seen the comment, I'm just interested to hear your response to that.
Right, well, I think it's important to remember, even from the time of the RFP and the original VCs, we had set up a standard of what the LEED levels would be, and have worked to, and are planning to achieve the required levels that we had agreed to from the beginning. So, in terms of high or low, I think we need to consider it in that context. And then, there are many different ways to skin, skin the cat with LEED. I think everybody knows that there are different points of emphasis within the different categories, and there are a lot of trade-offs. You couldn't do everything all at one time, so focusing on one area helps us focus on, you know, maybe takes away a little bit from focusing on another area. But I think that with the parameters that we've been working on, and the energy constraints that are available within the budget, and then also just within the use types that we're talking about, we feel that this is the best path forward to meet the requirements that were set out by the city. I don't know if you have a more specific question that I can answer?
Well, and I have, honestly, I have not reviewed, you know, the, in detail, the, the, the items that they're flagging that, you know, that staff feels could, could be attained that are not being attained. I guess, you know, overall, if there are, you know, I assume the low-hanging fruit, you know, maybe you've already, you know, called that, but to the extent that, you know, there's more, there are things that could be done for the non-residential buildings that are doable and reasonable. I mean, obviously, there's, I mean, I guess the voluntary concessions commit to what level of LEED? Is it gold? What do we, what do we?
I believe it's, I believe it's silver for the hotel and gold for the office, but, yeah, so.
And that's why, you know, obviously, you've committed to that level, but if there are additional, you know, items that can help, you know, further, you know, improve the efficiency of those buildings, and I'm sure you've looked at that, but, I mean, I guess that, that is consistent with, you know, the way this commission, I think, has approached these types of projects. And so I guess I would encourage you to continue to look at that. And I don't know, Ms. Aubrey, if you have something specific that you felt, that there were items that they could incorporate, that they're not, that staff in particular? I mean, you referenced, you know, several items that, you know, for points. Was there something in particular that, that staff was pushing for?
I mean, I think the best step in pursuing this one would be to talk with Kate Walker in the Environmental Sustainability Office to see, because that is a comment provided from her. So she might have good ideas on what particular items within those scorecards would be useful. It might come at a trade of some others, but she would be the best person that we could work with to pursue that.
Yeah, and we're happy to have that conversation, and also bring our consultant with us to the table, who's really an expert on kind of the most recent ways to achieve all of these, these different points. But, yeah, I think that that would be, would be helpful, but again, there are trade-offs and there are budget trade-offs, and we want to make sure that we're pursuing the right ideas for all aspects of the project.
Okay. We mentioned LEED, and look what happens. Tim's hand pops right back up, and so does Ms. Weiss. We'll go back, we'll go back to Tim, I guess.
Well, I think the reference that Kate Walker has is to the, that part of the LEED score sheet that's called Energy and Atmosphere. That's where the energy efficiency components are, and that's where I think it was observed that it was a little bit light, that a lot of the points, as, as you pointed out, are kind of in other areas of the LEED scorecard, which are all allowed, of course. But that the energy efficiency components, you know, there were a lot of point possibilities that were not, not being pursued. So, when I mentioned earlier that I appreciated the additional comment in the proposed motion, specifically it said item number three, where it talks about pursuing opportunities to increase the LEED scores for the hotel and the office in the area of energy efficiency and performance optimization. That's what I had in mind. I don't know exactly what could be done at this point, but, you know, I think we just kind of made the observation that that is an area where there could be, you know, additional improvements. And when I think back to the discussions that we had maybe four or five years ago, long before the project kind of got put on, on paper, Laura and Bruce in particular from the planning organization, you know, was proposing a lot of very, you know, kind of forward-looking ideas on how this project could reflect the best of, and leading edge when it comes to energy efficiency and renewable energy. And, you know, for reasons that I think we're probably all familiar with, and the need to pay for the school and so forth, you know, those things have not been accomplished. But nonetheless, I think, you know, if there is some opportunity to make at least some progress in that energy and atmosphere area, it would make for a better project.
I'm happy to answer that. I guess, Cory, did you have a similar question? And I can maybe answer both at the same time.
I'll underline everything that Tim said.
Okay, so I think another important, more nuanced piece, and again, I know you have a lot of other things going on outside of this topic for this meeting tonight, so we'd also be happy to have a separate meeting to discuss in more detail and bring, bring the other, the other staff member who brought up some of these, sorry, Kate, who brought up some of these concerns. But I think it's also important to understand that we're not just doing LEED for new construction on, as our rating system for all of these, we're doing the ones that make the most sense for each building type. So, for instance, with the residential, we're using LEED multifamily mid-rise version four, and then we're using new construction for the office and the hotel. But I think it's important to understand, just within the context, you can, things can be pushed forward, but again, there are trade-offs between LEED, the LEED points, but there are also trade-offs with the budget and LEED points. And the hotel is currently targeting a 10% to 12% energy cost savings. It just translates into some different points than some of the points that we're focused on, and the way the residential is done is also counted differently. So it's just also the accounting, and we're happy to go through all the details of that in a, in a separate meeting. But the office building is targeting a 5% energy cost savings, and it's mainly driven by a fuel switching issue, which is relative to the new ASHRAE, or, sorry, not to the new, to ASHRAE 90.1 2010 baseline. So we're working with the project team to try to figure out a better way to get around this, but some of these are just regulatory issues that have caused some challenges in the, in the design. So I think also it's important to know that we're continuing to evaluate all the time while we're working on this. We're in the design development part of the project, and are continuing to push to make sure that we meet the goals that we have agreed to from the beginning, but we will also have buffer points to make sure that we can get over the hump, even, you know, sometimes points are lost in, in the project. So we'll be moving forward with multiple buffer points on each, each piece, which helps us push things a little bit further.
Right, that, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's a key thing. I mean, a lot of times when folks show they're just making it, you don't often, right, points can have a tendency to drop off, and so you do need a buffer, so to speak, so, okay.
Right.
All right. Mr. Stevens, your hand is still up, but I assume that that, that addressed your, your question, and your hand is down, so, okay, good.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with moving ahead with this. I just was, did appreciate highlighting that, that that was an area where we're not perhaps as strong as we could be, and I think we've done that. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I just wanted to, you know, and I appreciate the applicant's response, and I'm, I fully expected them to continue to work towards that, but I wanted to make sure if we're adding it as one of our recommendations that, you know, we know, you know, we know why we're doing it. And so with that, unless any other commissioners have anything. Now, this also, I must forget in this virtual world, but this is a public hearing, so if no commissioners have any other comments, I will, we do need to check if there were any public comments received for this item for tonight's hearing. Ms. Bazemore?
No, aside from the comments that you guys reported this afternoon, no.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And as Andy would have said, you know, we are, you know, it's unfortunate that we've had to, you know, shift to this format, but I'll use this opportunity to also say to anyone in the public who is paying attention to this hearing and others, that we are looking to shift the Planning Commission to be able to take comments similar to what city council is doing, what the school board is doing, what some other boards and commissions are starting to do, to be able to get more interactive, live comment, as opposed to just written comment, and working that out with Mr. Stoddard and others to try to, to try to do that, so we can have public hearings, especially on, you know, on other cases that are, that are working through the pipeline, so that we can provide that opportunity for the public to participate. So with that, there are no public comment, then we'll close the public comment portion of this, and I would look for a motion, or look for someone to make the motion on, on this item, if anyone is so, so inclined. Mr. Stevens, hand is up.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion. So I make the following motion. Whereas applications for a special exception entitlement amendment and a special exception site plan to follow a mixed-use development project up to a maximum height of 15 stories has been submitted by Falls Church Gateway Partners pursuant to Sections 48-486(c) and 48-488(b)(3, and in conformance with the procedure set forth in Section 48-488(b) of the city code. And whereas the two-step process outlined in Section 48-488(b) for special exception entitlement and special exception site plan allows for further refinement of specific project elements during the special exception site plan review, and whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the second submissions of the special exception entitlement amendment and special exception site plan applications. And now therefore, I move that the Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the applications for the special exception entitlement amendment and special exception site plan for Phase 1, with consideration to include the following recommendations in addition to items already required by code identified in staff comments. Number one, can... Number one, continue to refine project design and architecture based on second submission staff comments and recommendations. Two, provide confirmation that the streetscape design still provides adequate spacing and orientation of required elements, lighting, street furniture, as well as spaces for pedestrian passing, and provide reasons and justification for proposed design where it differs from the streetscape standards. And number three, pursue opportunities to increase the lead scores for the hotel and office in the areas of energy efficiency and performance optimization as part of bu- of building design.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Stevens. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, uh, by Ms. Weiss. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion. I, I will just add, uh, for just for discussion, we didn't really talk about, you know, the other point, I assume, um, you know, it's explained in the report as far as the recommendations for, uh, the architecture, um, for the hotel building. And so I think, I assume that the, the commission understands that and, um, and I understand, and I trust that the applicant will continue to, to work on that as well as the streetscape comment. So with that, uh, if there's no other discussion, then we need a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Cottler?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Koma?
Yes.
Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a recommendation of approval.
Thank you all. Really appreciate it. It's been a great working with you for the last few years.
Yes.
Same, same to you. And, uh, this is a step closer to, uh, realization of this and we're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
We're very excited. Yeah.
Wonderful. We'll have a great night.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to Mr. Stoddard. So, okay, you, Mr. Stoddard already announced and explained that the, the lot line adjustment needs to be deferred. Um, so we'll, we'll not be hearing that. However, we will be hearing the land acquisition. Um, we will, or we will be holding the public hearing on the land acquisition piece. So with that, I guess, Mr. Stoddard, I'll, I'll look for a staff, a brief staff, uh, report on that.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, break in on the, the, on the lot line adjustment, item six. Sorry, I've lost track of the agenda here, but I think it was item six B on your agenda.
Yes.
Uh, I would recommend that you all, uh, go ahead and open the public hearing and then defer to a date certain. Um, it's, um, one, it's, you know, obviously to collect any public comment that may have, may have come in. I, I don't know that there's been any, uh, but then the other reason would be mechanical, uh, to avoid the need to, to possibly re-.
To react, sure. Right, okay. So let me.
And then I think, uh, Ms. Aubrey, if you're still on the line, I think you had worked out sort of a, a potential date for, um, deferral.
Yeah, I believe we could do May 19th. Because the school board should be able to, uh, take an action on that request at their May 11th regular meeting.
All right. So with that, then let me formally call it, call the item, because I didn't, we kind of glossed over that. But, all right, so the next item we'll, we'll call, uh, is the subdivision, which is a lot line adjustment, uh, plat approval application 20, 2019 dash 0322 for approximately 34.65 acres of property owned by the Falls Church City School Board and the City of Falls Church, uh, dress 7124 Leesburg Pike. Um, so that item, we are going to defer. So I guess we need a motion, um, based on the explanation from staff. Um, I have no objection, uh, based on staff's explanation. Um, and so I would look for a motion to move it to the date recommended by staff, May 19th, 2021. All right, we got a motion by Ms. Weiss. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stevens. Um, roll call vote, or maybe it's not a discussion, but, um, not roll call vote.
Mr. Cottler?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Koma? Yes.
Okay. So that item, uh, the West Falls Church Lot Line Adjustment, uh, is officially moved to, uh, May 19th, 2021. Um, okay. So the next item, which is item 6C, I'll call the public hearing for that, which is, uh, the acquisition of approximately, uh, TR 21 dash 07, the acquisition of approximately 0.33 acres of land from the Falls Church City School Board, um, to the City of Falls Church, being a portion of real property code number 51 dash 221 dash 008, located at 7124 Leesburg Pike, and authorizing the city manager to accept a deed of conveyance, execute the deed of re-subdivision and such other necessary documents as may be necessary to complete the transaction. Um, so I guess the first item would be, or the first portion would be a staff, uh, staff report or summary of the, uh, of this item.
Sure, I'll introduce it briefly and then again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Aubrey. But, uh, this is obviously related to the, to the two items. One, uh, the one that, that you all just took the motion to defer, uh, as well as your recommendation on the SCE and the SESP. Uh, but this is, um, uh, transferring a, a recommendation that the city acquire land from, uh, in this case, the, the, the city school board. Uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Aubrey for, um, uh, any details.
All right. Thank you. Um, yes, the request is for the city to acquire approximately a third of an acre of land from the school board. And that's to accommodate proposed changes in the site layout design of the West Falls project specifically for the phase two office building. And because this is involving transfer of land between the school board and general government, that's being processed as a land purchase. So one keynote I'll mention is that, um, this additional land does keep the economic development parcel under the required 30% as for economic development, as stated in the voluntary boundary adjustment agreement with Fairfax County. This will go to the school board, um, next month, and then the final action by the city council on, in May as well. And nothing's really changed on this from the work session a couple of weeks ago, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Aubrey. Uh, appreciate that. Yeah, this is fairly perfunctory, um, but it is one of our statutory charter requirements, as Mr. Stoddard always reminds me. Um, and so therefore we're required to hold the public hearing. We're holding it. Are there, are there any questions, uh, from commissioners of staff on this recommendation to require land for public purposes? Mr. Stevens' hand is up. Is that left over from the last one or do you have a question? Nope.
It, it is indeed left over. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Just checking, you know, this, this system, it's, uh, it's easy to do that. Um, in real life, it'd be harder to keep your hand, you know, up for 20 minutes without realizing. Um, okay. So I'm not hearing any questions from commissioners. I don't have any questions on this. We had a few questions at the work session, but I think it's all been satisfactorily explained. This is a necessary step in the process. Um, and it is a public hearing, and so we'll open it up to the public. Are there any public comments on this item, Ms. Ms. Bazemore?
Not there, none.
Okay. No public comments. Um, so we will close the public, uh, comment portion of the hearing. Um, and if there's nothing further, then I would, again, look to, uh, the commission for a motion on this item.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Sure, Ms. Weiss, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend approval to city council of TR 21 dash 07 for acquisition of approximately 0.33 acres of land from the Falls Church City School Board to the City of Falls Church, being a portion of RPC 51 dash 221 dash 008, located at 7124 Leesburg Pike, and authorizing the city manager to execute the deed of re-subdivision and such other documents as may be necessary to complete.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. That's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens, seconds. Uh, okay. Any, any discussion on the motion? I'm hearing none. Again, I, I think all that's been said on this item has been, has been said. I think we, we concur. It's a, it's a public, it's a public purpose and, and, and it meets the, meets the test. Um, so with that, we'll look for a roll call vote. Please, Ms. Bazemore.
All right, Mr. Cottler?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Koma? Yes.
Great. So that recommendation has been approved. Um, okay. Moving right along, Mr. Stoddard, we're making good time. We'll see if, see if we're able to keep that up. Um, the next item takes us out of public hearings and item number seven for informational items. Um, first up, are there any reports from commissioners? Anyone have any reports from the last couple of weeks? And it was spring break in there, Easter, Passover, holiday time, maybe, maybe people weren't as, weren't as busy with city meetings and other activities, but anybody? I'm seeing any. Okay. Well, no, that, no reports, correspondence. I see that the letter, uh, which summarized our discussion on the, um, on the West Broad improvements was up. I see some other stuff. I don't know, Mr. Stoddard, are you gonna, uh, quickly, uh, summarize that or?
Uh, I, I'm certainly happy to. So, uh, I like to use this correspondence, uh, sort of section of the agenda, sort of a clearinghouse for anything that the commission sends out, uh, or anything that comes to the commission to make sure that everyone on the group, uh, obviously has access to the same information. But as you all may remember, you received a, uh, staff presentation, a staffing consultant presentation on 30% designs for a multimodal project along the West Broad Street corridor, uh, approximately from the intersection of Broad and, and West Street near the WOD Trail Crossing, uh, down to, uh, Virginia, uh, Virginia Avenue near the Broaddale Shopping Center. And the commission had a, a range of comments, uh, on street design consistency with streetscape standards, uh, promoting access to bus stop transit, uh, service in the area, bike racks, uh, sidewalks, material choices, uh, inclusion of street trees. So this is the, the letter that was prepared, um, uh, by, by members of the commission and sent over to the project team. Uh, and we have been engaging this. Um, staff is going to meet internally, uh, before providing further direction to the, uh, the consultant. Uh, the idea is obviously to take this input from the planning commission and incorporate it into the project, uh, as part of getting the plans from 30% to 60%. Uh, I think, I think the preliminary thinking might be that instead of trying to, um, maybe stretch the dollars across the entire project, uh, it might be to, uh, focus on some of the areas of greatest need, uh, and see if it is impossible to actually deliver something closer to full streetscape, uh, in select areas, uh, versus, um, something less than that across the entire length of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Any questions on that item? Okay. And thank you for, Ms. Koma, for, for, for volunteering and helping on putting, putting those comments together and coordinating that with me. Um, okay. Moving along, um, there were, there were some other correspondence on the Lincoln Avenue idea, um, which I, I kind of liked this ball because it started as something that you just kind of threw out there as like, uh, you know, like, like a poor example with a whole bunch of disclaimers and lo and behold, you know, people on Lincoln Avenue picked up on it and, and said, actually, that's a great idea. Um, we thought this is how these things can get started, you know? You start building some momentum, um, on some of this stuff. And so anyhow, so what, what is the latest on this?
Uh, so this is the recommendation, uh, the number of signatures and supporters along Lincoln Avenue, uh, back up and I'll, I'll, I'll introduce the item, sorry. So this is, uh, what's being talked about here is a concept of redesigning the way Lincoln Avenue works. Uh, today it's two relatively, uh, wide travel lanes, uh, parking lane that is important, but not fully utilized, uh, for a couple of different reasons. Uh, and then some sidewalks that are not in great condition. Uh, and the, the context here is that residents across the last few years have been asking for better ways to get across the street, safely access their homes, safely access the park, the rest of the city. Uh, and for a large part, they want to do it on foot. Uh, there have also been neighborhood traffic calming concerns. One of the reasons the on-street parking isn't used is because people feel it's, um, actually not safe to park your car on the street because of the number of times, uh, car, parked cars have been hit. Uh, and so the project proposal, um, uh, was to, uh, introduce a number of urban design elements, uh, to, to weave together on-street parking with, uh, street trees. Obviously some engineering needs to go on to figure out, uh, you know, make sure that's feasible with the, uh, any utilities that may be underground. Uh, but the idea is that don't take away the entire parking lane, but maybe use portions of it, uh, while maintaining visibility to the fronts of houses, find a way to work in more sidewalks and more crosswalks, uh, to make sure that, you know, where there are missing pieces of sidewalk, people can safely get across the street. Uh, and this has been picked up by the neighborhood. Uh, if we scroll down to the, uh, the number of signatures, it's, it's growing to be quite a list. Uh, there is an opportunity, uh, to really fold this in actually as part of an existing CIP project. Lincoln Avenue happens to be on the list, uh, for what's called roadbed reconstruction, where the entire street is torn up, uh, down to the, down to the grade and, and reconstructed. Uh, and so I think what the neighborhood is asking for is, is twofold is, is one, for some of these redesign ideas to be considered as part of the reconstruction. Uh, I'm sorry, I guess I should say three things. One, they want that included. Two, they want to be part of the design process. Uh, and then three, they want to pilot some of these things, uh, to see, you know, whether these could work or not, uh, and whether these changes could be incorporated.
Great. Great. And I'm not surprised that it's gaining, gaining momentum and popularity from the folks who live along that stretch. Um, because, you know, I, I, yeah, so it's the idea that's, you know, this time is, you know, I don't probably had arrived, you know, uh, well before this, but, um, you know, I think it's the time, you know, it's, so it's past due to try to look at how we can make that roadway better. There certainly is room to improve the situation from today, without doubt. Mr. Stevens, I'm sorry, your hand is up.
Yes, it is.
I don't know if I missed something.
It's for real this time. I actually did have a comment. Yeah, the, I, I was, uh, kind of interested in the citizen comment, uh, particularly the comment about piloting, uh, some components of this. And it kind of reminded me of something called tactical urbanism, which is a concept that comes up from time to time in the Congress of New Urbanism. And that's where you try something, uh, using an inexpensive, uh, set of features to, to see how it works before you make the much larger, uh, in- investment in, uh, kind of full-time materials. So this may be an opportunity for, uh, planning department to see if there's an opportunity here to, to pilot, uh, some of the components that are being proposed.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of benefit, uh, to this idea of tactical urbanism. I think you always want to make sure whatever you're doing is, is safe. But just to, you know, put this in context, I think, you know, folks might say, well, gosh, are you gonna, you know, install something just to sort of rip it out and throw it away later? Um, you know, if you're gonna replace it with something permanent, uh, or if it doesn't work. Uh, I, I would say that, you know, just thinking a little bit about status quo, you know, something like, um, you know, curb extensions or speed humps or something like that for a neighborhood traffic calming process, you might spend tens of thousands of dollars engineering it. Um, so if you can instead spend a few hundreds, uh, on plastic bollards, even if you fully intend to throw them away, and I don't think we do, uh, but even if you intend to fully throw them away, it's still less than the cost, uh, and certainly faster than, than the engineering involved. So I'm not saying one approach is always right. I, I'm just saying it's something worth considering. Uh, so I'm, I'm glad the neighborhood is open to it.
Great. Uh, Ms. Koma, your, your hand is up.
I just want to second what Mr. Stevens said on about tactical urbanism. It does seem like a good opportunity. It made me think of Parking Day and how we are able to kind of transform a parking spot into a park for, over the course of the day. I, I know that Lincoln Avenue is much longer and, and there was a lot more, um, fast-moving traffic on that road, unfortunately. Um, but it seems like maybe, you know, there's an opportunity to, to try to use some planters or something to kind of almost create that sort of central park space in the middle of the road. I don't know how that would be done safely, not the expert on it, but I'd love to, um, I'd love it if staff would explore that idea. I'd love it if staff would explore that idea. And then the other thing I was wondering about is I imagine that the the cost of sort of building the street as, you know, envisioned by our Lincoln Avenue neighbors and as originally, you know, proposed by by staff as an idea is outside of the scope of like a typical roadbed reconstruction. So are there is there funding to do sort of like a bigger rebuild of Lincoln Avenue? And if not, are there grant funding opportunities that we should be pursuing now? Because they're on the schedule, I think, for 2023 or 2024. Is that right, Paul?
Yeah, it's only a couple of years out on the CIP schedule. The project already has grant funds on it. That's how the city does most of its transportation infrastructure at this point. There's very little that's purely locally funded, although there are some things. The so yes, I think there would be a need to go out and probably find additional funds to supplement. And so I think it would probably be important to probably at least start penciling or sketching that design now so that people know how much to go for, that it can usually take a couple of years from the time of submitting an application to having the the funds available for use. The I guess the advantage you might have is that if you are going to go into sort of a if the community is going to go into a sort of a bigger design process, you may be able to, I don't know, this is always a little tricky, but you may be able to phase it and sort of start engineering with the with the funds you have with the expectation that you're going to fill any construction gaps as you go along. It's I mean, there's some risk, but but it's not unusual. I don't know, I'm 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 more comfortable with risk than maybe some folks on staff are, so. So I'm sure I'll hear about it tomorrow, but I it's certainly a project you could take.
Great, thanks, Paul.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Okay, so moving right along, I guess next would take us to your director's report.
Oh, thank you. The I know we got a lot of items, so I will try to walk through these, you know, briefly, but 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 not skip over anything. The first item in the report is the annual community profile. And I say annual, I think this is now our fourth publication perhaps of this. And this really was the only action item coming out of the the vision chapter, the update to the vision chapter when the city updated that. And the the goal coming out of the chapter was to provide an annual report on what the city was doing and where it was making progress against the goals. So as always, the the community profile includes the division statement right up front. And then the structure of the profile is kept short on purpose so that it's readable. We try to, we insist that there be pictures on every page. And then it's each page is framed around one of the eight core values in the vision chapter. Emily, I don't know if we can jump to that. I'm not going to read through it, but I just want to give people a sense of of what we're picking. The for anyone curious about the the color choice this year, credit to Pantone, they selected two colors of the year this year, gray and yellow. We didn't have enough skill on our own to pick colors of the year. So when someone stumbled onto Pantone's color of the year, we've just been using that ever since. But it's it's a recap of what the city did in the past year, where the city's going. And really, the report this year focused on the city's response to the COVID pandemic and obviously the ongoing investments in the city and the major advances in terms of securing funds for affordable housing throughout the community. And then, Emily, if we just jump to a couple of pages just to just to show that there's some summary demographic information, all this comes out of the the census estimates. And then the, like I said, the core values from the vision statement, small town character in an urban setting, photos of local events, most of which had to be delayed this year, economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, and so on through the the rest of the core values. That is the annual community profile. It's available not only in this report, but also in the city's planning library. And Emily's got the link highlighted there. And I'm happy to take questions on that.
Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Just a quick comment. Since I complained in past years, I guess I better give you a compliment this year. On page seven, under the climate, air, and energy, I appreciate that you added a reference to the city's greenhouse gas emissions. And so maybe next year, you could even reference our goals. But but bottom line is, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. And and credit to, you know, staff. This is not just a product of the planning staff. This is a communal effort by a lot of different departments. Planning staff takes a final read to make sure everything's got one voice and and everything fits on one page and has pictures. But otherwise, it's it's data and information from staff in that page. A lot of the information there was courtesy of Kate Walker.
Ms. Comott, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just want to say I thought this document was really great. It's just such a nice succinct summary of what has been happening in the city in the last year. On the same page that you were just on, Emily, on waste management, I was wondering if you could maybe wanted to add the composting program. I see a lot of those white and green bins out there now. I know a lot of my neighbors are using it. We're using it. It's just another important part of our waste streams. That's just a small comment. And then, secondly, I was curious how this document is used. I mean, is it is it something? Who's the audience for it? It just strikes me that there's a lot of really great information in here that it kind of sells the city, maybe to people who might want to open businesses here or developers who might want to build here. So I'm just wondering how what we're doing to kind of make like market this or make it make it more widely available, if anything.
Yeah, right now, it's getting out largely by word of mouth. So planning staff certainly sort of walks around with sort of not necessarily a copy. Well, I have a copy in my binder. But but generally, people, we do point developers to this, people that are interested in moving to the city. We try to share it with boards and commissions whenever we can, obviously. The idea is really to serve as a as a fact base so that that people know, you know, what's going on in the community. Because this is certainly, I'm not aware of, you know, everything that's going on until I read the report. So I think it is helpful for everyone to keep pace with with all the great stuff that's happening in the city. So we do try to share it as widely as we can. We try to keep it posted on the web. Maybe one thing we might be able to do is maybe reach out to OCOM and see if we can't get a little blurb, maybe in some of the newsletters that go out or on the social media channels.
Great, thank you. And congrats on on the doc.
Thank you. The I think this year's team, Jeff Hollern, he's been our lead for the last couple of years, but also Emily Bazemore and Val Weiner.
You guys did a great job. Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, I'll jump to the next item in the report. Thank you, Emily. The community benefits comparison. For anyone that didn't get a chance to catch the the tape on this, Becky, Becky Witzman, the chief of our Economic Development Office here in the city, made really an amazing presentation. And Val Weiner was also part of the the team pulling together the data. But it was a comparison chart, and it's in the attachments, but it's it's long, so I'd actually rather work off this narrative. It was a comparison chart of the community development, community benefits that have been delivered as part of the mixed-use projects that have delivered here in the in the city in the last 20 years. So it went back over the history of the eight mixed-use projects in the city, going back to the Broaddale, and talked about what have those projects delivered, not just in fiscal benefits, obviously, that's part of it, but in other benefits as well. And so I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights here. I guess I'll take them in the order written here. So, you know, in total, the projects delivered 370,000 square feet of new commercial space. And if you convert square feet to acres, that's eight and a half acres of commercial use and activity. And of that space, a full, almost 94% of it is occupied, which is really quite a tremendous occupancy rate. That, you know, full occupancy, you know, somewhere in that 90 to 95% range is considered full occupancy because of the allowances for turnover. But it's it's not just the commercial space. In addition to that, it's it's $7 million that was contributed as part of the projects to school capital, the School Capital Fund, as well as almost 70 affordable dwelling units and just under 10 workforce units that were also included in the project. Gross revenue. So I know we're in the city's in-tax season now, so I think it's helpful to to raise this point that in total gross revenues for the projects in total combined to be 11, 10.8 million dollars. And that's actually one-tenth of all the city revenues that are coming in every year. And if you net it out, it actually works out to 4.1 million net, a fiscal benefit of $4.1 million net coming from these projects each year, which is the the equivalent of of nine cents on the real estate tax rate. Some things from a land use planning perspective, the total, in total, the eight projects sit on approximately 18 and a half acres of land in the city's commercial areas. And to put that in the context, the city has identified planning opportunity areas along Broad Street and Washington Street. The total land that's identified in the POA, the planning opportunity areas, is 240 acres. So these taking up just 18 and a half, it is a lot of acres, but it's also a pretty small fraction of the total land plan for redevelopment across the city. The let's see, prior to redevelopment, and this is one of the things that was highlighted and really got the POAs included in the comprehensive plan back in 2005, and that is that these existing commercial areas have a pretty low level of development. Floor area ratio, a ratio of how big the building is to how big the ground area of the site is, when you have an FAR of of 0.1, it means your building area is only 10% of your land area in relation. And the gross revenue from these sites was $571,000. In comparison, the typical floor area ratio of the sites is now around 2.46. And 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 the the fraction, the 0.46 FAR is commercials. So if you just compare what's what's going on in terms of commercially use to what was there before, you've gone from a 0.1 FAR of commercial uses to a 0.46 FAR of commercial uses. So you've multiplied the amount of commercial square footage by four and a half. And then there's some notes on methodology that are always good to include. I don't know if we can jump to the chart. I don't know that I'm expecting anyone to read it because there is quite a lot of information, but it may be helpful just to show just the the volume and the type of information that's included. The maybe the chart. Oh, yep, that's hard to read, at least on my laptop screen. Maybe we can zoom in and just scan across the column headings at least. So it breaks it out by what was the development project, far left column, net fiscal impact, what was projected to be the fiscal impact, and then so on through a number of columns and community, including community benefits. Are there? I'm happy to take questions on that.
Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, this is a very good analysis, I think, in many respects, leading edge. There was a few comments that this week's and maybe the last one to the EDA regarding not limiting this just to mixed-use projects, but also consideration of other large projects in the in the city, such as the Kensington or the the Hilton, which are not mixed-use, you know, technically, but nonetheless, they're they're large projects that throw off a lot of benefits to the city. That it's very good to have this information to inform policymaking in various aspects throughout the city. The one thing I would find helpful at some point, and it's by no means urgent, is is it possible to get a little better understanding of the net costs that that went into the analysis? I think we we get it pretty clearly on things like school costs and and a few things like that. But there obviously are other significant capital costs in the city that we want to make sure that the projects that we approve are helping to cover the those costs and maybe even making a contribution. So it might be good at some point to have somebody come through and just kind of give us a little bit more detail on how the cost components of of the modeling takes place. But overall, it's it's it really is an excellent piece of work.
Thank you. The and yeah, I'm happy to pass along the 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 supporting news to Becky and Val. The on the the costs that are factored into the model, I know it's been a couple of years. So the fiscal impact model is not produced by by it's run by city staff, but it's produced by Tischler Bice. They are considered experts in the in the sort of field of fiscal impact analysis, and they they do these similar exercises for for communities across the country. It's been a couple of years since we've had them in to talk to the planning commissioner, the EDA, about what goes into the model. I know we're working with them on a model update now, so I'll ask them about whether they're available to come in and talk about what are the model inputs.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Stotter?
Okay. Yep, yeah, if there are if there are no other questions, I'm happy to jump to the next next item. Oh, current planning report. Yeah, we can jump to this. This is just a I think pre-pandemic, planning staff was in a pretty good rotation of of sharing a quarterly report with the planning commission on all of our activity. We haven't been able to keep up with that, I think, at the same same pace of reporting or the same breadth of reporting. But what's included here is just a, this is where we stand on current applications, current planning applications. The it looks like the second page is left intentionally blank. But what we jumped through is sort of, this is just a stepping through of where we are on different land development applications throughout the city, West Falls Church, the new high school, probably need to change that name, Founder's Row, if we keep scrolling down. The Insight Project, Founder's Road 2 Atlantic. I think just one thing to highlight, obviously, there's a lot of community input getting through the entitlement process. But of course, once once the entitlement process is done in terms of zoning and special exception, there's the site plan process and then the carry-through throughout construction. So these are things that we track through through certificates of occupancy and sometimes even after when there are turnovers in the retail space. And then if we keep going, this just scrolls through the rest of the items that are still closing out or under construction. And it gets, I think, all the way down to to the level of subdivisions and lot line adjustments. But just to give you all an update on on where we are with a variety of applications. And of course, you you see these in your agendas. It's it's just helpful for us to consolidate these and make sure you all are aware of where we are with each of these. So that's 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 it on that item.
Okay. And that was the that was the end of your director's report.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you and I talked about agenda at the future meeting, but I know we've got another item. So maybe we'll maybe we'll skip talking over the agenda for future items and and jump to the next item on the agenda.
All right, let's let's do that. That one is going to take take, I guess, the a little bit of time to discuss. Exciting, exciting item. Kind of the next, the next big project, mixed-use project in town. If we're calling Founder's Row 2, which I hope we can come with a better name for that. Maybe Mr. Muffler can, you know, comment on that. And I feel like, you know, maybe there's a more exciting name than Founder's Row 2, but it certainly, you know, I guess is descriptive enough for now. So, okay, we're going to go to work session on the Founder's 2 Special Exception project. And I guess we can start off with the staff presentation.
Yeah, and what I'd like to do is actually spend just a few minutes sort of setting the stage for tonight's meeting just to give everyone a sense on the call of of, I guess, what staff's hopes are in terms of running the meeting tonight. So we're trying something new, and you know, I'm willing to be wrong if if this doesn't work. But what we're trying to do tonight, there was a there was a staff report, actually. Ms. Bazemore, if we can jump to one of the attachments, I think it's the last attachment on the staff report. It's it's the memo from staff to the EDC on the the proposed process. Attachment seven, yeah. So in in late February, planning staff approached the Economic Development Committee, which is a subcommittee of the council, about ways to to maybe review revise the board and commission review process, the public review process for major applications like this. You know, for the audience that's on tonight, the board and commission reps and the staff liaisons, one of the things certainly planning staff has been hearing about is some frustration from boards and commissions that by the time they get a chance to see the applications and comment on them, a lot of the fundamental aspects of the project have already been established and and they're difficult to to change or significantly impact. And so what staff brainstormed and presented to the EDC was this idea of, well, let's engage the boards and commissions earlier. It's a it's a little bit difficult because this this application hasn't been formally referred out by council. And with that, it means that it is still very much in the early stages of review. of review, and sharing it with the boards and commissions shouldn't be misinterpreted as council's okay with this and wants your feedback before it goes to approval. That's not the case at all. It's still in the early stages of review. Council does have some significant questions and some changes they want to see in the fundamentals of the project. But still, the intent for tonight's work session is to make sure that board and commission reps have a chance to receive a presentation on the project, to highlight their key issues. And here, the expectation isn't that each board and commission has reviewed the project in full and has detailed comments, certainly if you have them, welcome to share them. But in general, I think what staff is hoping will come out of this, and I think the applicant as well, are the general areas of interest and the general goals or objectives that each board and commission, each stakeholder group has as this project goes through the review and refinement process, so that as the applicant is moving through changes to the design, they have those key points or those key issues early and they can incorporate them when the project is still more flexible.
Right, no problem, that was a great introduction. I apologize, you know, I was planning to say something about that. And so, just so, for those boards and commission representatives who are here, first of all, welcome and thanks for participating in this. I mean, actually, this is something that, you know, Paul references, you know, commissions and boards expressing that they wanted to have some input earlier. I know, I often want to mention that on this commission, that I think it would be helpful to have some input earlier in the process, you know, with the caveats that Mr. Satter just said. So this is going to be a test case of that, and we'll see how it works, but I think, you know, the goal for tonight is to keep it as a discussion, it's conceptual, but the applicant has produced some, you know, some fairly detailed concepts, if you will. And I think what we'll do is we'll have the staff presentation, we'll have the applicant presentation, and then we'll open it up for comments and questions. And I think we thought we would start with the boards and commission reps who are here, you know, let's give them a chance to, if they so choose, I mean, don't feel that you must comment, but if you have questions, by all means, this is the opportunity for that. And then after that, you know, I think we would let the commission, you know, have a discussion and comment and question after the other boards and commission members have had their opportunity first. So with that, to kind of set the stage, I guess we'll start off with the summary, and I believe it's Mr. Hollen is going to provide us with the staff report.
Yeah, Jeff Hollen is our lead planner on the project, and I'll turn it over to him for the staff report.
Thank you. Yep, so I'm Jeff Hollen with the planning staff. Planning Commission is requested to host a Boards and Commissions Town Hall on the proposed Founder's Row Two development project. The Planning Commission has further requested to hold a work session on the first submission of the project application and provide feedback and guidance to the applicant and the staff. One thing I will mention is that the full staff report was actually created and sent to the city council for the March 15th work session, so I'll be jumping around a little bit here, Emily, if you want to follow along. But so, a little bit about the project, it's a mixed-use building with a maximum height of 85 feet comprised of the following uses. It's six feet, or I'm sorry, six levels of residential multifamily rental apartments above ground, above ground floor retail. The ground floor retail is just under 16,000 square feet along frontage of the project on West Broad and Southwest Street. It has 431 spaces of underground parking. Building height varies from 85 feet along West Broad Street to 33 feet along Allison Street. This is a special exception in rezoning application. The special exception relates to allowing residential development within a mixed-use, within a mixed-use zone, and it also is asking for up to 30 feet of height bonus for a proposed building of 80, building height of 85 feet. The rezoning is for the area currently zoned as T1, being requested for rezoning to B1 to match the rest of the site. Surrounding uses include single-family residential properties on Allison Street and Southwest Street, and future mixed-use development Founder's Row across the street at the corner of West Broad and Northwest Street, which is under construction right now. The area where this site is, it's currently a, out of the Broad Street corridor revitalization area. By state code, the revitalization districts allow for densities of at least 3.0 floor area ratio, or F A R. Density greater than 3.0 F A R is already being constructed across the street at Founder's Row. So this first submission for the, one thing to note about the first submission for the special exception application is that it was reviewed based on special exception code that has now been amended as of February 22nd, 2021. The next submission, staff will be looking at under the lens of the amended special exception code. So just for tonight, we're going to kind of go back in time and review it under the last special exception criteria. As for that criteria, primary criteria number one, which is the resulting development conforms to the city's adopted comprehensive plan and design guidelines, the proposed project demonstrates many of the principles in the comprehensive plan. Many of these design concepts utilized in the project is also consistent with the city's design guidelines. The second bit of criteria that the project, that the resulting development provides for significant net new commercial square footage and allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses, the proposed retail uses, I'm sorry, the proposed retail uses could potentially offer a higher quality retail experience at a key intersection with significant improvements in streetscape and retail frontage along West Broad Street and Southwest Street. The proposed additional affordable housing units for the life of the project at 12% is tangible community benefit associated with a residential use. These additional or doubling of A D U units is significant, but the monetary value is offset by the developer not providing capital contributions to schools, libraries, and park facilities. The proposed project provides for a mix of commercial and residential uses totaling approximately 384,691 square feet of gross floor area with a 4 to 94% commercial residential ratio. And the third bit of primary criteria for special exception is that the resulting development produces substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue in the city. According to methodology used in recent special exception project evaluations, the projected annual net physical impact of the project is just shy of half a million dollars. The public service costs are higher than expected due to a higher-than-usual pupil ratio, then the fiscal impact could be as low as $205,000 annually. We did not include the, I won't go through all of the secondary criteria with you, it is included in the staff report attachments. It is a letter that's been transmitted to the applicant, if you wish to read through that. As for proposed automobile parking, the developer is proposing an underground parking garage with 431 spaces, with 80 spaces for retail and 351 spaces for residential parking. For the mix of uses proposed, the zoning ordinance requires 573 spaces. So the applicant will be requesting an overall reduction in parking of 142 spaces, or 25%. So as Paul mentioned, this had gone to the E D C in February. City staff presented a proposal for improving the board and commission review process, which he had mentioned. So that is what we're starting tonight with the town hall. But as a follow-up, also, we did have a, we did have a work session with city council on March 15th, so I'll just briefly go over with some of their comments, the topics that they had brought up, which might carry over in tonight's discussion. They talked about urban design ingress and egress for residents and retail customers, things like architecture and materials facing Allison Street and the residential neighbors. They talk about transportation, things like walkability, connectivity to Founder's Row Two and the W N O D trails, and the traffic signal operation at Broad and West. And they also brought up issues such as fiscal impact in the net commercial area, just the amount of commercial square footage and significant significance of proposed uses, and the methodology for the fiscal impact analysis and public service costs on this project. There is, right now, there is no long-term schedule. We are going to make a more definitive schedule moving forward once we have received a second submission, but I think that the idea is that we will hopefully get a referral from city council to the boards and commissions in July, and then go forward from there, scheduling those, and the applicant can meet with the boards and commissions in the future, one-on-one. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Muffler with Mill Creek.
Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that summary. And Emily, I believe you have the presentation that I, wrong project. There we go, perfect. Thank you all for your time here this evening. I do appreciate this new process that we're going through. Frankly, getting feedback earlier is better in my mind than later. This gives us ample opportunity to pivot and work through feedback from boards and commissions before the second submission. So as Jeff summarized, we made a submission back in November, received comments in January, and subsequently, we've met with the Economic Development Committee, we've met with city council, we've talked to neighbors, we've received a lot of feedback. So actually, some of the things that I'm presenting tonight, while they are essentially the same as what we presented to city council back in March, they do differ slightly from that initial submission. They will be included in the second submission, so we'd like to think that what we're presenting to now is improved upon based on the feedback we've received thus far from what was initially submitted. I do need to commend staff, council, neighbors for the feedback that they've given us on this project for frankly, the last 12 months, even longer. You know, this project has been discussed for quite some time now. I know the city has long wanted to see this corner optimized, whether that's redeveloped or re-tenanted, or whatever the case might be. I think we're all aware that those stores, especially since Rite Aid has gone vacant, they've laid fallow for quite some time now, and it is such a prime corner in the commercial corridor. So we are honored to be here tonight, and with that, why don't we just hop forward here to the second slide, Emily? Oh, and then, Mr. Krasner, as terms of Founder's Row Phase Two, we are not married to that name, just think it's a nice little placeholder for now, so people know what we're talking about, but I promise you, we'll study that further as well. Quick introduction, I believe I am joined tonight by some fellow members of my team. It's a team that is very similar to who you, who we all dealt with on Founder's Row Phase One. Mill Creek is the developer and owner of the project. We do not currently own the properties, but we do have contractual obligations with the property owners. The architect on this project is Odell Associates out of Richmond, civil engineer is Walter Phillips, traffic engineer is Wells and Associates, and the landscape architect is J two E Engineers. I'm also joined by David Lasso from Baskin Jackson Law Firm to help us with the zoning on this project. So again, a lot of the same players. I do believe members of my team are here, so as we're going through boards and commissions, hopefully, if you do ask any more technical question, Wells can answer. If you ask an architectural question, Odell can pitch it in his answer as well. Next slide, Emily? Just a brief introduction on the existing site, I think we all know where this lies in concern with Phase One catty corner. It does constitute the two lots of 1001, 1003 West Broad Street, otherwise known as the carpet slash cabinet store and the Rite Aid. As mentioned prior, both buildings are vacant. The Rite Aid's been vacant for about a year now, and the carpet store has been, if not vacant, you know, we all know, underutilized for quite a while. In total, those two buildings physically are 25,000 square feet in combined building size. Now, that includes, the carpet cabinet store is more of a warehouse, I would say, than it is a retail storefront, and that 25,000 square feet includes things like loading, trash, back-of-house operations, et cetera. So I think it's important when we're looking at, even though the zoning criteria has changed to allow for, say, less than 25,000 square feet, we don't have to put 40,000 square feet into this, because at some point, you know, I would contend you start bumping your head up against the ceiling about how much commercial is enough commercial. I think that the retail that we are proposing, the commercial that we are proposing in this project is significantly better for the city, both physically and just from a use perspective, than what is currently there, or even what could be there without redevelopment. The zoning that Jeff was describing is the same zoning that Founder's Row Phase One, the rezoning rather, the same process that we went through there, and the same special exception request for the bonus height density. The rezoning is in compliance with the future land use map by the city. It is in compliance with, I think, what the vision is for this corner. Next slide, Emily? Again, it's a small city, I think we all know what this corner looks like today, but just some sample images in terms of what is there today versus how we would like to optimize it moving forward. Next slide, Emily? So the proposed program, as Jeff summarized, again, what we were trying to do is provide a complementary project to the Phase One across the street, which we do believe is kind of the next iteration of the evolving downtown of City of Falls Church. We do see Phase One as being kind of that anchor lifestyle entertainment center that the city needs. I think we're all very much looking forward to that delivering later this summer, and eventually having a movie theater in there as well, as long with, along with a variety of restaurants and other lifestyle and entertainment uses as well. Again, we want to capitalize on the city's small area plan to concentrate retail residential uses in the heart of the city's commercial corridor, and really approve upon these prime corners for commercial and for mixed use. Here's a summary of the program. I'm going to get into this in more detail. One thing that is of note that is different from the presentation, or from the initial submission, is we have received feedback throughout the process that one thing that the city could use, that the neighborhood could use, is additional office space, not large commercial office space, but rather small tenanted office space for things like medical office tenants, CPAs, things of that nature, and we have made that inclusion. We have raised the commercial in this project from plus or minus 15,000 to 20,000 square feet. This does not include outdoor areas that I'll cover, and does not include a co-working space either. Emily, if you want to go to the next slide, we'll dive into a little bit more details on the program. Sorry, here's the, here's the ground floor as we conceptualize it, and then Emily, next one gets that into a little bit more detail. So you can see some of the elements here, as I've highlighted, the purple reflects the ground floor retail. One thing you'll note as it wraps the corner of West and Broad, we are creating these outdoor retail pavilions, so the storefronts are recessed, your signage is on the front, but it allows for very ground-floor double-height space, very cool urban environments to allow for either outdoor dining, outdoor workspace. We can get very creative as to how those spaces are deployed. Again, that is a very urban-centric type of model. I know it's been deployed at the Broadway, and there was some concern, well, it didn't work that great at the Broadway. I think here, it could work a lot better, a lot better, for, as I said, it would be at the ground level, it would be double-height. I think that that could be a really unique, cool retail experience, especially post-COVID. I think we all know how much, how important these outdoor spaces are, especially for things like restaurants, coffee shops, et cetera, to be able to have those outdoor spaces. As you come around the building, you can see in the orange, or the lighter orange, is this, is this, sorry, medical professional office space that is being proffered, and then along with this, there is a light shading of blue, is a community co-working space that I'll touch on later. Now, because of the topography of the site, anyone that's driven down Southwest Street knows that the topography really drops off there, co-working space, looks like it's nothing right there. It's just because of the topography, it's on a different level, it is about 5,000 square feet, and we'll talk about it more. As you move south on Broad, south on West Street towards Allison Street, the building does taper off from seven stories down to three stories, with the buildings taking on more townhome-style apartment units, very similar to the treatment of how Phase One tapers from the movie theater at Phase One down to the townhome-style units along Park Avenue. Lastly, one of the big notes that came out of our conversations with council, with Economic Development Committee, with the neighborhood, is creating some kind of gateway park element at the corner of West and Allison Street, something that really provides connectivity from, not only, well, provides a transition rather, from the commercial corridor on Broad Street to the more residential corridor, but also moving east-west, provides that connectivity to the W N O D trail, which is further down Allison Street, which is a massive amenity for the city, for this project, for the neighborhood. So I think that's a very high-level summary of the ground floor plan. Oh, last two things, sorry. Oh, last two things, sorry. We do have two parking entrances. There is a retail entrance that we are showing off of Broad Street as you'll see here. And then we have a second entrance, which you can't really see, but it's essentially where the orange is, you can read it. The residential parking entrance is on the lower level along Southwest Street. Now residents would likely be able to use also the retail parking entrance off of Broad Street, so that they have two ways of getting in and out for traffic purposes. Retail would likely be confined to the top level. And the curb cut, the location of that garage entrance is at the curb cut for the entrance to the Rite Aid as it stands, plus or minus at that entrance. To, off of West Street. Emily, next slide? So we are, we are trying to be thoughtful with residential diversity. And frankly, it's a very similar mix to what we are doing at, across the street. But kind of pushed together. We are essentially looking at three different types of residential uses. Your standard market rates, your age restricted for ages 55 years and older, and your affordable housing. And we view this as a barbell approach to home design from standard and age restricted. From a standard apartment living perspective, we are looking at smaller unit sizes, smaller for the city and smaller especially compared to Phase One of about 850 square feet. Which we think will provide nominally a lower price point for younger renters to be able to move into the city. And on the other end of the spectrum, we have much larger homes for the age restricted community, for adults who are looking downsized. Or looking to be in a community with like-minded individuals, people of the same age. This is a product type that is exploding across the country, as you can imagine, given the demographic trends of this country. People who are not looking to be in, you know, retirement communities or nursing homes. But who also don't need their, you know, Potomac mansions and want to be closer to family or whatever the case might be. The City of Falls Church is a beautiful and perfect place for this. We think it's going to be very successful at Phase One. And we think it could be successful here at Phase Two if designed and programmed correctly as well. And again, there isn't, outside of what we're doing at Phase One, there is not something like this inside the Beltway. So we're excited about it. There are things in Tysons that are somewhat similar, but again, the way we're doing this, it's not overloading as you'll see going forward. I believe it's about 55 units for age restricted. One of the biggest community benefits here, which I'll touch on more later, is that 12% of the total homes we are proffering as affordable dwelling units. At 60% and 80% AMI. That is double what we did at Phase One, double which is what is traditional, which is about 6%. So you're looking at about 38, 39 total homes. And furthermore, of all of the homes in here. You're looking at 75% of the unit mix being studios, one bedrooms and one bedroom dens. So again, really targeting kind of a younger demographic. Which necessarily hasn't always been the case with some of these larger apartment communities. And we think it's a more modern approach for the city, something that, you know, might be a little bit new and unique. If we can go on to the next slide? Again, so you know, variety residential uses, variety of commercial uses. We do view the 15,000 square feet of ground floor retail as being substantial. And also being complementary to, to what is occurring across the street at Phase One. Phase One, as I mentioned before, is very entertainment lifestyle heavy focused. You know, it is a lot of restaurants, it is a lot of, it's clearly the movie theater, it's big restaurants. It's gyms, you know, which is great. I would say those are very sexy uses. You can only do so many restaurants, so many gyms, so probably only do one movie theater, so many grocery stores right in the City of Falls Church. And one of the things that we've been posturing throughout this process is really want to bring community serving retail to this project. What that means, I think still needs to be defined. I encourage feedback from people as we've gone throughout this process. I've heard neighborhood coffee shops, I've heard dry cleaners, I've heard convenience mart has been a very, you know, a push, push on term. For everything that I say, there's someone that loves it, someone that doesn't like it. I totally understand that. I understand the commercials, you know, something that we all really focus on. And as we evolve this process, we do plan on defining what those uses will be. But sitting here today, you know, we've got an approval process, we've got a construction process, and then we're delivering this thing four years from now. It's just not going to be plausible to bring a lease to the table that has any teeth to it whatsoever for a retail tenant for this type of space. If you have a theater or a grocery store, that's one thing, although again, that, that has come to bite us personally. As to how that can work when you are dealing with these long lead times. But I think refining what those uses look like is kind of the next iteration of this submission. The second piece of commercial use is this flexible office space, 5,000 square feet. Not only is it additional ground floor activation, not only is it an alternative commercial use, but we do think that is a need that serves the community. Whether it's a dentist or a doctor of some sort, or a CPA. Just, just light use medical professional office space provides again, a separate use for the community, separate use for the project. One thing that should be noted is this was not included in the fiscal impact model. I can't tell you it's going to be a massive income generator for the fiscal impact, but it is something that was not considered. Lastly, in terms of commercial use, which we are not classifying in kind of commercial ratios, it's not part of the 20,000 square feet commercial. But we are proffering a co-working amenity space that is shared by both residents and the community as a whole. Look, we all know the post-COVID, people are working from home more, that is not a trend that is going to go away. And most of our communities, we are programming larger work from home spaces, not just your conference table with some printers, right? But true work from home space, you know, it looks like we work, we have desks, we have conference spaces, et cetera. And one of the things that we would like to do is be able to open that up to the community, either through a membership basis. Or even through if there are nonprofits, boards and commissions, et cetera, that need a conference space to be able to house, you know, a meeting of 10 or 15 people. They can use the co-working space here at Founder's Row Phase Two. So again, diversity of residential, diversity of commercial use. Emily, if you don't mind the next slide? Oh, so I apologize. So this, this, this just kind of reemphasizes what I was describing. You can see it is activated, there is outdoor space. Because of the topo, you know, you can see how this all is being contemplated to work, but this is office, co-working space. Could be a very, very cool element to the project for both residents and the community alike. Next slide, Emily? Community benefits. Actually, this is piggybacking on the report that Paul was going through. So if you total up the benefits that we have in our initial submission, you're looking at over $10 million, about $33,000 per home. That is more than Phase One, which at the time was the most that a project had committed to the city. So it is a substantial, significant commitment of community benefits at this point in time. The major benefit is 12% of the housing stock being affordable housing. Before I start talking about these, all these benefits though, I do want to emphasize, Mill Creek is very flexible with how these benefits are applied. E.G. if we want to scale back affordable housing and we want to make monetary commitments to libraries, to schools, et cetera. Our pockets are not limitless. I know that everyone likes to think that, you know, we, we can pull a lot out of development, keep give, give, give. Totally understand, and we want to be cooperative with the city. Some point we bump our heads into it. So we really try to maximize affordable housing. At the expense of other benefits to show you what you, we can get to. And we're at about 12, and we're at 12% of our housing. So we have taken some feedback, happy to get more feedback here, and we can adjust this moving forward. We are flexible. Couple of other things that we can touch on, you know, we've got traffic calming and signal updates, TDM program, Wells is on, they can speak to that. I've got a couple of slides on it. From an infrastructure perspective, undergrounding all the utility lines which are surrounding the site, that's a significant amount of work. You're talking about street sidewalk repairs and general streetscape updates to the city standards. You know, these are the retail activations, bike racks, benches, trees, et cetera, really activating that corridor so that, you know, you've got Phase One. All the way through Phase Two, then you get to the, to the West End project. And you know, you start seeing the streetscape activation, this downtown, or no, this neighborhood downtown environment for the City of Falls Church. From an environmental perspective, we are making a lead gold commitment throughout the whole project. Along with things like the electric vehicle charging station, solar plan, panel, future planning, onsite stormwater treatment. I've spoken about the retail, the office, the co-working space. We have tried to make design improvements. You'll see some renderings throughout here. Frankly, I do have a video, I don't think we're going to play now because in this environment, it's probably going to buffer too much. But we have received feedback to try to change the architecture a little bit, so it doesn't look so similar to Phase One. So we have worked on that. A second submission will include thoughtful improvements to the design. And then fiscal impact. Again, the retail space there is vacant. Think, you know, it's been subutilized for a while now. So inherently what we're, what we're posturing here, what we're programming is going to be a significant upgrade over what was there before. I think that fiscal impact does need to be remodeled as we make these adjustments to our second submission. I have brought up that I think the pupil ratio should be reconsidered here. I think we're, I think we're comparing, the city is comparing new projects to older projects that are not true comps frankly. And is throwing off the pupil ratio, which is the massive portion of frankly, the fiscal impact model outside of the commercial element as well. Next slide, Emily? So transportation and parking, I do have Wells and Associates here. I'm not going to pretend to be the experts, so when you do have questions. I, I think Will is on and can help me answer. But essentially, with all the work that's being done at Phase One and at the West End. That traffic signal which does present problems today is going to get worse. We do believe that with a redevelopment of this site and with the improved conditions that we can do through traffic calming, through signal timing. Through signal phasing, we can at least bring it back to where it is currently, if not make it even a little bit better as well. I know that this is a big project and we are dealing with a residential neighborhood and Southwest Street can get busy. The net impact of cars though, in the AM and PM hours is roughly 3% to 4% more cars based on the modeling that, the pre-COVID modeling. The Wells and Associate is doing here. So, you know, we do have thoughts on that. Emily, the next slide kind of touches on some of those thoughts in a little bit more detail. Again, signal timing and phasing in Broad and West, so you can allow concurrent left-hand turns. Traffic calming strategies along West Street. We will be doing improved pedestrian crossings and gateway elements at the West and Ellison intersection. A TDM program. We are requesting a 25% parking reduction, which I know sounds large, but given the age restricted use, given just general parking trends. In the staff report, I believe there is a parking summary of what's actually occurring in the city. I think that the 25% parking reduction could, is, is very supportable. And then also, we'd like to work with the city on making sure that the parking along Ellison Street is residentially zoned for those residents only. So that we don't, so you don't have to worry about the commercial patrons parking there, the residents parking there, that's really for the neighborhood itself. Next slide, Emily? Design and architecture, I, I mentioned this before, we do have a kind of a video fly-through. I'm going to skip that for now. We can try it later if you all want. But we are looking at trying to evolve this from the classical Falls Church model to something that's a little bit more modernized. We're not, we're not going all glass downtown DC, but something that's just a little bit different. Next slide, Emily? Almost through in this. I did want to show just some design and architectural elements here. Here's a rendering, this is on, this is the intersection of West and Ellison Street. You can see the building taper, you can see the town home style elements. And then that is just a placeholder for the park. The next slide is actually going to touch on a little bit more details to how we're conceptualizing that, that quote unquote park or that greenscape element. But you can see how the commercial is concentrated to Broad and West, and then you taper down to a much more residential environment here. Next slide, Emily? So this is the open space that we're considering. Again, some green space, some outdoor seating, a, a place of gathering for both the retail tenants, for the neighborhood, for people that are coming to and from the WNOD trail. We do think this could be a very cool element here. We are, we got this feedback about a month ago. And frankly, we've been trying to get through the board through this meeting before we evolve this to its next iteration, which we'll try to do. But we do like this open space element here at the intersection. You can kind of see some of the revised crossing as well in the pedestrian elements. Next slide, Emily? We've got two more. Connectivity here is just kind of a before and after, or before potentially after type illustration as to how we want to improve this experience along Ellison Street. To make this, not only improve the connectivity, but clearly make it more aesthetically pleasing for everyone involved, a little bit safer. And we think that this could be a nice element that is thoughtful and we certainly want to work with the, with the neighbors on these elements as well. And then last slide, Emily, I think is just a question. So I do appreciate the time. That took me a little bit longer than I had anticipated. But a lot to go through. This has changed in the staff report. I do have my team here. We look forward to, to talking through, any questions, answering any questions, the thoughts you have?
Great. No, thank you, Mr. Muffler. That was, that was a great presentation and provided a really good overview for what you're, what you're proposing. So as I said before, I think the best way, Paul's got his hand up before I even get started here, but you guys have to jump in on Paul?
Oh, I was just going to say that as, as you go around to each of the boards and commissions, I might ask that, that, that everyone present identify not only themselves, but also what, what group they're representing. Like I said, we're working out the wrinkles here, but we need to make sure that, that we don't accidentally stumble into, in unadvertised public meeting. So, so the goal is to have each group represented by one person, two is okay, but it can't be, but it can't be three or more.
Sure. Okay, yeah, Paul, yeah, I was, and Paul, Paul, still a little bit of a thunder. I was going to make sure folks remember to identify, you know, who they are, what group they're representing. You know, as we, as we go around. And honestly, you know, we're not going to require that everyone has to say something, so don't feel that you. You need to ask a bunch of questions if you're not prepared at this time, so maybe it's the first time you're, you're seeing it, but. But anyhow, with that said, you know, I guess we'll kind of open up the floor to anyone, you know, use the raise your hand tool there at the bottom of your screen. And we can, we can start out and see who's got something to say. Otherwise, always off the call on people, I'm just kidding. Okay, we got a couple of folks and I'll try to take them in order here. First hand that went up was, let's see, Mr. Ralph Anderson?
Hi Brent, should I put on my camera?
If you'd like. Yeah.
I'll try. I, I did have a question. Well, and I, I thought I had a statement as well, but I don't know if you want. Anyway, it says team needs permission settings. I don't know. I'll just talk. I'm losing you now. I'm sorry. Let me go back to Zoom here. No, not Zoom, we're teams today. I'll just talk. I'm Ralph Anderson. I'm the Chair of the Stormwater Task Force. We're doing a lot of work both on terms of increasing gray infrastructure capacity in the city and also now green infrastructure. To try to, because the gray infrastructure is aging, it's overstressed. We're not able to move water out of the city. And so, you know, when I look at a project like this, there's a lot of opportunities for green infrastructure. And I, I did note in your presentation, something that you have some stormwater capture, and I'd like to talk a little bit more about that. And maybe about some green infrastructure elements that you could have. You know, what I worry about is just sheeting off into the neighborhood and onto streets and into the, into the storm sewers. Because the problem is, is, is a lot of housing downstream gets flooded. And so a big development like this could have a, a significant impact downstream. So to, to, what, what opportunities are there for maybe doing some green infrastructure, trying to retain some of that water on site? And to mitigate the, the flows, excess flows into the system?
Yeah, so I think there is a couple of answers here. And before I begin, Antonette, are you present?
I am. Hi.
Hey, Antonette. So Antonette is our civil engineer with Walter Phillips. She can answer this question better than I. So actually, I'm not. Antonette, why don't you take away how we thought through this thus far? I know we have more to do on this and more meetings to have, but maybe you can talk through some of these?
Sure. I'm Antonette Isherwood with Walter Phillips, and we're the civil engineer on doing the project. So we have taken a look at the site. So preliminarily, you know, we've just done some preliminary computations here. We are planning to do some bioretention planters along the Ellison Street portion of the building to meet some of our stormwater requirements. And so bioretention planters to help with not only water quality treatment, but also for runoff reduction. I think that's some of the green infrastructure that you're thinking about. And then there's also going to be a courtyard space in the building, so that has not yet been designed. But we're looking at opportunities of what we could potentially do within that space. And then in addition to that, you know, we do have to meet our stormwater detention requirements. And that's usually met through providing a vault for storage detention. And so we are going to be providing that on site. One of the comments that staff had asked was for a reduction in runoff from the site beyond what the state is requiring. So that's something that we're continuing to also look at further. And as you mentioned, you know, some green infrastructure does help with that in addition to providing water quality treatment. And then beyond that, we are having to relocate some of the storm sewer that's currently located on the site. A little bit offsite because it is within the building, the new building footprint. And so through that, you know, we are running calculations for capacity. And so we're going to need to meet the capacity requirements where there may be some storm pipes within the city that are undersized today.
Yeah, that's, that's super. Thanks. I think those are great, that's a great start. I really appreciate that you guys are taking those actions. I guess I would say that this is a fantastic opportunity both for, for you guys as a, a new development in, in the city to serve as a demonstration of how good development can be implemented without worsening our environmental conditions. And so I hope you can coordinate with the city staff on best practices and appropriate mitigation measures. And maybe there'd be some more that you'd be able to do that as you take through the project further. Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Great, thanks. Okay, the next hand that went up was Mr. Thaskir Rizzi?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, yeah, I'm Joseph Shirizy, uh, representing the Environmental Sustainability Council. Uh, we reviewed the application for a special exception and um. We're encouraged by the initial application content, especially its commitment to green, sustainable design. Um, we look forward to sort of learning more about the plans specifically of how we're going to achieve lead gold. Uh, or even a more stringent environmental certification. Uh, energy use reduction, stormwater infrastructure that was already mentioned. And planned transportation demand management measures. So it was already mentioned that the WOD trail is a huge benefit to this project and to the city. So I want to know what's going to uh. How, how we're going to encourage people to use that and to find other uh means of transportation around the city besides cars. Um, we're interested in electrical vehicle charging stations and that was also mentioned, but we don't have. Uh, it, there was no specific number of how many there are. Um, so I'd ask for an answer to that. And um potential onsite renewable energy generation um on the roof and whether that's being looked at. Um, and in terms of uh other things that are our priorities going into this. Um, please, please, please check out the Chapter Five Environment is for Everyone in the City's Comprehensive Plan. Uh, it has been updated this year and it is very important um to sort of our goals and. Uh, I'd like to just remind everybody that environmental sustainability is our ability to continue to exist as a civilization. So uh personally, I think a lot is at stake with these sort of projects and um our values. So we've had uh several other, other comments uh from other members that uh have been sent to the. Um, planning commission. So I'd encourage everyone to check those out, but I won't uh take up all the time with that this evening. Um, we mentioned that there was a 25% parking reduction. Um, so my personal comment would be to allow that and uh.
Oops, did we lose Joe? All right, we might have lost Joe, but I, I think we did hear a lot of what he had to say. Um, Mr. Muffler, did you, did you kind of get where he was heading with the charging?
And I, I, I candidly don't have any long response to that. We, we do appreciate the thorough review and, and the support. I, I can't tell you exactly how many EVC charging stations we, we have planned currently because we don't. Uh, we're going to have to study that and see what we think is optimal and what the city wants. So that'll be something we work on together. We are all in concurrence that the W, W and OD activation connectivity is not only important, but like. We, we want that. That is such a huge amenity at phase one, given where it is. It's going to be a huge amenity at phase two. So it works both ways. The city wants it from environmental perspectives. We want it as, you know, as ownership to be able to promote that. So. That's things like bike stations and, you know, bike, bike parking, et cetera, et cetera. We have to think through that, but uh, you know, all those comments were well taken and we'll continue to evolve in our next mission.
Okay, uh, great. Moving on. See, the next hand up was Jason Garman.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, so my name is Jason Garman. I am the Vice Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. Uh, so we unfortunately have not had a formal uh meeting since the city council work session. Our meeting is actually next week. Uh, so we of course look forward to uh, you know, being involved further uh down the line, but I just wanted to kind of. Uh, touch on a couple of high level things uh now at this point. Um, first, I guess I could just start off with the W and OD trail and just echoing uh some of the previous comments and discussion on that. I'd also like to, to, to point you to the city's bicycle master plan uh in regards to the W and OD trail connectivity. Uh, so both uh West Street and Ellison Street are identified in that plan as a potential for uh on-street uh bike facilities. Uh, and so we just want to make sure that the uh, that the project is, you know, is integrative and in considering the bicycle, the city's bicycle master plan and. And how the, how that connectivity can be uh robust from an infrastructure perspective. Um, and then just a couple of other quick, quick things uh, uh, transportation related. Uh, the first is just the overall, you know, multimodality and the equity of access that that provides. Uh, particularly uh with the, the housing mix that's being proposed. You know, we want to make sure that, that uh multiple transportation options. Are available uh and not just, not just car oriented transportation, which uh, you know, given the expense of that, uh, and given that some of the lower cost and. Uh, alternatives that are, that are available to people particularly living in, in a increasingly urbanizing environment. And just making sure that, you know, we, we provide uh the opportunity for all those modes to coexist and to, to be effective. Uh, in getting people where they need to go. Um, and we also uh would like to pay particular attention, particular attention to, and I saw this in the uh. In the initial um list of, of uh, in, in the slides related to traffic calming. And just coordination with the city's neighborhood traffic calming program uh to make sure that we're, that we're, you know. Uh, providing a robust uh solution to uh traffic calming concerns from, from uh the surrounding neighborhood. Um, you know, as, as you said, you know, West, this intersection can, can get uh very busy, uh particularly at peak times. Uh, and so the, you know, the ability to, to kind of mitigate some of those impacts uh to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, I think it'll be key for, for uh, from a transportation perspective. Um, and the last, last thing I just wanted to, to mention was on the parking reduction. I was curious, and this is more curiosity on my part, not necessarily something that would have been looked into already with this project in particular. But I know that there have been uh, you know, uh parking uh concession or sorry, parking reductions in prior projects in the city. Uh, of, of, of a similar nature. And so I'm just curious uh if. The, the effectiveness of those or, or if those um, you know, reductions have been too much or too little. Uh, for, for comparable projects and how we might be able to kind of leverage some lessons learned from, from prior projects to, to kind of hopefully right-size that reduction. Uh, you know, 25% might be the right number or, or it might be higher or lower. And so I'm just wondering if we, if there's an opportunity to. Uh, to use some experience from past projects in the city uh that have had similar reductions to, to, to kind of right-size that, that program. Uh, so again, just wanted to, to, to throw a couple of high level things out there. Uh, but of course, you know, our committee is, is, you know, look forward to, to providing further comment. Uh, as we, as we continue in this project. Unfortunately, we just haven't had the, the formal opportunity to meet uh, uh, since the, since the city council work session. So. Uh, but again, thanks for the time tonight and we look forward to working, working uh together uh further.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mr. Garman. Thank you for those, those initial comments and we look forward to working with you all as well. I just have a couple of things to touch on there as well. One thing that I haven't mentioned is that. As key element of our TDM program here, as it was at phase one, is walkability to metro. Um, that is a big element. Um, and will continue to be. Um, so, you know, we will market that and that will be a key part of this as well. Um, on your latter point about parking reductions, I can't speak to what other projects have received and not, maybe Paul, Jeff have that information. But I'm not sure if it's in this staff report. It was in the, in the city council work session staff report, though. There is a residential parking comparison table that shows kind of what the approved parking ratio is and what's actually being utilized. Uh, for example, 301 West Broad, the West Broad residences, that had an approved ratio of 1.2 and it's being parked at a 0.9. Uh, and, and you go on so, so forth down the list. They're all very similar like that. They're approved at X and they're at Y, right? So.
Yeah, that's great.
The city might be able to speak on that a little bit more.
Yeah, and when, just one other thing that I forgot to mention was uh, and again, to pedestrian connectivity, uh really is, you know, and obviously this will. You know, given the, the relationship between the phase one and phase two projects, that'll be a critical component of, of pedestrian connectivity between the two, particularly, you know, given the. The busyness of that intersection and, and making sure that, that we, that there's a, you know, a pretty robust infrastructure solution. So that's to, to ensure the safety of pedestrians going. Back and forth from, from the, to, to the two different sites. Uh, because I think that also uh factors into, to some of the trip reduction uh strategies that can be part of the transportation demand management. Uh, is that if a lot of the, if a lot of the needs of the residents of both, of both projects are, are, you know. Housed within those projects, then that, that can, you know, reduce a lot of the, the vehicle trips that would otherwise have been generated by the, by the projects as, as. A reduction in additional trips in the area. Uh, and I know that that signal, that the signal at West, at Broad and West is. Uh, it's very busy at, at peak times. Uh, the signal timing is a challenge. Uh, particularly with the split phase on, on, on West Street. And I know that uh, some of the staff comments, I think from, from Zach of DPW. About that uh is, and, and again, I think it was addressed in, in Wells' uh traffic study. Of, of looking to potentially re-time that signal to, to uh improve the traffic condition as well as, you know, enhance safety at that intersection.
Okay. Great. Let's see, the next uh hand that was up was, I believe was Anne. Oh, now her hand is down. Anne Norlov's hand was up, but now it's down.
Yes, I'm here. Um, I represent the Human Services Advisory Commission and thank you very much for addressing. The affordable housing, which is a major concern of ours. Uh, we also want to emphasize um. The necessity for accommodation and welcome of um handicap persons. Uh, particularly uh wheelchair access and also for the elderly. It's um, we often get um. A lot of talk about, well, we're going to make this accessible for uh, uh baby. Baby, uh, what am I trying to say? Strollers. And that's great, but we also have to accommodate um the elderly and the handicapped. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Norlov. And uh, you know, with, with the, you know, the idea of programming a 55-plus. Community here, especially and, and we have one across the street. That's uh, you know, that, those are, those are profound programming, just, you know, choices that we need to make uh to make sure that we're being thoughtful and accommodating.
Thank you.
See, the next hand that went up was Jeff Peterson.
Yeah, hi, Jeff Peterson, President of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. Uh, the Board of the uh, of Vipis hasn't had a chance to meet to discuss the proposed project at this point. Uh, we will be meeting next week and I think we'll have a chance to talk about it some more. I can give you a couple of uh sort of immediate feedback uh points real quick. Uh, just first of all, the, for a, for a two-acre project with seven stories. The, the open space on the corner there is, is pretty marginal and I would call it really inadequate for the scale of the project and. It's a little bit of open space and it's even less green space. So. I'd urge you to really rethink whether there's a way to uh, to create more public, open and green space. Uh, across the project, if not at a larger single site. Uh, I, I do agree with the earlier comment about um thinking creatively about the rooftop use. Options, whether it's for energy or a green roof. Uh, you've got a massive two-acre space here. Uh, and it, it's, I think, time from a climate and. Other sustainability point of view to really make effective use of those spaces. I appreciate that you have expanded the uh office space somewhat. Uh, but in the context of there not being a large anchor uh type facility in the project now. Uh, I'd really encourage you to think about whether uh the remote office space type services might be. Expanded even more than what you suggested tonight. Uh, and that, that might really be an anchor to. Uh, draw people to the city as well as to draw people to the, the residential units. On the point of charging stations, I, I, I think there's a lot of room for improvement there compared to past projects. You uh obviously haven't picked a number yet. Uh, as I'm sure you know, uh DC is talking about 20%. Uh, and I don't think we have any projects in that neighborhood here yet. Uh, but that's where we need to go and uh your project really ought to be uh getting closer to that goal. It'd be great to see uh maybe down the road if um. If not right now, some commitment to public art as a contribution to this entire effort and. Without kind of having seen much of the overall facade and, and um. And design, I, I do think that there is a little bit of a, of a massive sort of fork look to it right now. Um, with a little more step backs, not just on the one side, the Ellison Street, but throughout the project. A little more diversity in the facade. I think you could make the project look a little less uh intimidating, maybe. Um, and finally, I'd urge you to consider whether um. Like the uh Founder's Row One, it would be possible to do a contribution to the expected. Impact of the new residential uh units on the, the services of the Mary Riley Styles Public Library.
I'm, I'm sorry. I missed that. I missed that. A contribution to the, to the what?
To the public library, the Mary Riley Styles Public Library in Falls Church.
Got it.
Just down the street from your project.
Yep, nope, totally. Completely understand. Right across from our pediatrician. Um, no, thank you for those comments. It's uh, they're very thoughtful. We have work to do and um, again, they're very thoughtful comments.
Okay, uh, let's see, I believe the next hand up was Stephanie Oppenheimer.
Hi there. Good evening. Thank you all for having this um, having this meeting tonight. I certainly um have missed having the in-person meetings at the Founder's One. Um, project, but still appreciate this opportunity. So um, I represent, I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, so. Uh, representing the Mary Riley Styles Public Library. Um, Jeff and I did not plan this back-to-back, but, but here we are. Um, we too have not as a board had the chance to discuss this specific project, but certainly. Um, based on conversations for other projects, I think I can probably generalize what the general. Theme may be um in terms of a comment from us. So I just wanted to say um. I, I wanted to draw attention, which might be more of a city matter than you guys, but um, that the development will not be. Or does not plan to right now provide capital contributions to the school, uh, library or park facilities. Um, I do know that we as a city made this decision for the Washington and Broad project. Um, but I, I'm afraid to admit I wasn't aware that it was sort of an assumed uh thing going forward. So. Um, I guess my, my comment, and, and I think I would be saying this on behalf of the, of the library board, is that while that's certainly good for. Affordable housing, um, it feels a little bit of an unsustainable and perhaps worrisome model for um. Some of these departments long-term, particularly if we are bringing in obviously greater populations that will be. Uh, utilizing schools, parks and libraries. Um, I'm just a little bit concerned about that. So I, I would want to add that in um for the record. And I guess just on a more general. Comment that I, again, this is definitely for the city. Um, wishing that we had sort of a baseline proffer package that developers had to use as a starting point. I feel like we. Go through this process with every new project of um. Sort of tweaking the whole proffer uh concession plan um based on each individual project. And I do recognize they are all unique. Um, but I feel like if we had some baseline, maybe we wouldn't have to go through this. Um, every time. So uh, that's it for me tonight and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much for your feedback. And again, we remain, I'll, I'll reiterate, we're, we're very flexible in how these benefits are applied. And we'll continue those conversations with staff, boards and commissions throughout the process.
Great. Okay, let's see, next, Mary Sellers.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am representing the Arts and Humanities Council. Um, I'm a member at large, um, and happy to be here. We also have not had a chance to meet to go over this project like others on the call. Um, but I just had one sort of general question, um, and that was really about. How do you all sort of envision the arts being factored into this development or are they being factored in? I know someone mentioned public art, but. Sort of beyond slapping a mural on the side of the building, are there ways that you are thinking about um including the arts and humanities in this space? Um, yeah, that's my first question.
No, I appreciate that, Mary. And, and I'll, I'll be transparent and candid in saying I don't have anything definitive, right? Like I, I, we have contemplated areas where, not to be reductive, where yes, there could be some kind of mural or art installation specifically along that corner of West and Ellison Street. Utilizing some of that green space or the sides of those buildings to do something cool. utilizing some of that green space or the sides of those buildings to do something cool and unique. Otherwise, you know, this is not like Phase One where we had that massive communal outdoor area, and we will be working very closely with Arts and Humanities on programming for the Market Square and whatnot. It's a little bit different here, so I don't have anything definitive. But as we have discussions with you all, I mean, I think that's kind of what I want from this process. And once you all meet the feedback that you all can provide us is, here are our thoughts, and we can see what we can accommodate. So hopefully, that's, that's kind of a non-answer, but that's, that's just where we are in the stage of this.
Yeah, no, I figured that, you know, further down the road, we'll probably have more of these conversations, but I just encourage you to use us as a resource in thinking about some of these elements, because, as you know, involving artists from, you know, the planning stage can really have some beneficial beneficial outcomes in designing really just great spaces that are just a little bit different from some of the standard developments that kind of pop up. And yeah, I would, I would love to see, I think our group would love to see, you know, some sort of commitment to public art. And I always encourage the involvement of local artists, so if there's a way down the road to have a conversation about what that looks like, whether that's using some of the retail space for studio space, or if there's options for live workspace for artists, just a few things to sort of think about as this plan is developing. That would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your commission's help with our, with our very large mural over at Phase One, which will be starting up here in a couple of months as well.
Look forward to seeing it.
All right, great. I don't see any other hands up from other folks, and so I guess maybe we'll pivot over to the Planning Commissioners. Emily Bazemore has her hand up.
I would like to read some comments submitted from Kathleen Philpott Costa on behalf of the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm just going to read them verbatim from her email. Dear members of the Planning Commission, the Urban Forestry Commission is unable to send a representative to your meeting tonight, and we have not been able to review the Founder's Row Two materials as a group yet. Please consider these broad recommendations on Founder's Row Two at this point. Number one, minimum tree canopy requirement of 10% to 15% at 20 years, and the absence of its own tree canopy-related code language for commercial and mixed-use properties. The Virginia Code Section 15.2-961 provides guidance for Falls Church establishing a 10% minimum recommended tree canopy cover for projects of this density. Number two, minimum 10% to 15% open or landscape green space. We base this longstanding recommendation on the city's own mixed-use code, which has a 15% landscape open space requirement. While we understand that this project is under the Special Exception Code and has a unique approval process, this project is mixed-use in substance, and we'd recommend that the city look to its own mixed-use code for guidance in its projects, or in projects of this nature. Number three, incorporation of green infrastructure that contributes to stormwater management. This recommendation is based on the Comprehensive Plan's emphasis on green infrastructure for stormwater management, and it's important to give the site's proximity to residential zones, or given the site's proximity to residential zones. Number four, green loop connections between the site to other green areas such as West End Park and Berman Park. This is supported by the city's West End Small Area Plan Goals and the city's conceptual plan for the redesign of West and Ellison Streets. The above recommendations are all consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Five, which contains a city goal to establish minimum canopy and green space standards for special exception, mixed-use, and commercial projects. The UFC is working on developing recommendations for such standards and looks forward to socializing with, or socializing them with the Planning Commission in the future. In the meantime, I appreciate your consideration of these initial recommendations for this project. We look forward to discussing further details with the project developer and the Planning Commission as the project plan evolves. Kathleen Philpott Costa, UFC Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bazemore. I guess, Mr. Murphy, you don't have to respond to that, you know, here, but you noted the comments and, and okay, so with that, we'll pivot over to the
I also have my hand up. Hello?
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I hear you. Who's talking?
This is Philip Osborne. I'm on the Architectural Review Board.
Go ahead, I sense your hand, I apologize.
Hand up before, and anyway, and then there's another member of our board here online, too. We like the, I like the material selection very well. I thought there was a nice variety and choice of materials and stuff, but as one of our co-people have pointed out, there, it seems like the, both Broad Street and West need, the elevations need more up and down and in and out and stuff like that. They're just, you know, a little, little too plain. But, and then Sharon, do you want to say something? Maybe. Maybe not. Hello?
Well, no, I, I, I'm not sure if your, if your colleague is there, not Mr. Osborne, but your points are well taken.
Well, then, I do have a couple of other things to him. I, I thought she was going to say them, so that's why. I'm sure you'll keep this in mind, too, but we're always concerned with the looks of of rooftop equipment and stuff and screening and the like, and, and whether or not that gets incorporated into, you know, the facade or further back. We really care about it and want to, want to minimize the view from, from the street. Okay.
Well, no, thank you for those comments. We have worked on the elevations a little bit more from what you were seeing here, when you've seen in the presentation. So when we show up next, I can't promise that they'll be perfect, but they will be different.
Okay, good.
And then I see Sharon Freeland just put her hand up.
Hi, thanks. I couldn't get my, my, my microphone was having some technical difficulties when Phil was reaching out to me a minute ago. I'm also on the, I'm the Vice Chair on the Architectural Advisory Board. I did have some questions about, and Phil touched on them, is the, the penthouse, the elevator penthouse, and the rooftop equipment to kind of make sure that those are set back. I know that on Founder's Row One, they, you know, we, we talked about that with the special exception height. And that was promised that those wouldn't be visible. The problem is, is that they're, they are highly visible, and you do have approaches that come down and look down upon this as well. I think it's most important that it's not visible from the pedestrian experience from, you know, across the street, as well as, you know, the surrounding context. I think it would be helpful to see, I appreciate having the, the three-dimensional views, but it's really hard to see how they fit into the context around it. You know, it would be great to see how this relates to the adjacent properties. Specifically, how, you know, how it relates to Ellison Street, how it relates across West Street to those businesses there, and also how it relates and speaks to Founder's Row One, because I think you're trying to, to make some connections there, but it's really hard to see that in, in what we're looking at here. And then just some other quick points about environmental questions about, you know, the heat island effect with the rooftop, how you're handling that. I did hear that people were talking about perhaps some green roof, but also maybe some introduction of some bio swales will also help with some stormwater runoff, as well as contribute to some pollinators coming into that area a little bit, and breaking up the facade, which Phil also touched on. And thank you for the opportunity to take a look at this. We haven't had a chance to review this as a, as a board either, but we look forward to seeing it come back.
Thank you very much for those comments. I do believe that our architects and model are on, so I don't think there's much that we can respond to at this point, but your, your comments are well taken, and we'll, we'll continue to study.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so now I think, I apologize if I cut off some of the folks before, but we'll pivot over to the, to the Planning Commissioners at this point. And I'll open it up to any, any members of the PC that that have something they'd like to, like to bring up or ask at this point. Maybe everyone's all, you know. Mr. Stevens is, is up.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak first if somebody else had some thoughts, but I'm, I'm happy to go ahead. Just to provide some, I guess this would be under the category of early feedback. Still thinking about a lot of this. But as far as the unit mix and the target demographics go, I think I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it shows some creativity there in light of current situation. Parking ratios, the need for rezoning off the T1, I'm, I'm okay with that and the rationale and so forth. As far as there not being a big commercial draw, and I'm thinking of something like the movie theater or grocery store, I think I'm okay with that for this, this site. It's, it's a somewhat smaller site than some of the recent projects that have been proposed in the city. But it kind of leads to the, the couple of areas where I do have some concerns. One is it's still very large from a residential standpoint, 319 units for a two-acre site is very large. And so I have concerns with the scale and the, the massing of this project, especially given that right across the street, we have the Founder's Row One, which is also going to be a very large project. Couple of things in the environmental area. There's been discussion that LEED Gold would be the, would be the objective. But there's also discussion in the staff memos regarding NGBS, the National Green Building Standard. And of course, that's what was used in Founder's Row One. And the, the problem that some of us had with that is that while NGBS is very good on residential components, and probably every bit as good as the LEED program, it has a gap on all of the non-residential components, the commercial components. And so that kind of leaves us without an environmental certification program as far as those components go. So as a consequence, a lot of us have really kind of focused on the value of having a LEED program as being the, the guiding environmental certification program. So, you know, I would, I would certainly encourage the developer to take another look at that. The staff memo from Kate Walker did point out a possible way that NGBS could be used, and that is with what's referred to as a full mixed-use building compliance path. And so that may be something that the developer would want to look at and come back and, and share their thoughts with us regarding. So anyway, those are a few things that, that struck me at the, at the outset, and as I say, as a, as a first glance. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. On the environmental, I, I think at this point, we are, we are comfortable with the LEED, the LEED process. To your point, I think it's, it's something that the city and other jurisdictions are more pressing for because of its all-inclusive requirements. So we're okay with that. I don't see that changing, but if it does, we'll have the conversation. And I, I think that, I think that's really about it for now, as we continue to study the project. I'm sure there'll be more comments.
Yeah, and I would just kind of feedback very quickly.
I appreciate it.
The other thing regarding LEED is, especially for a small jurisdiction like ours, where we don't have staff. You know, it'd be one thing for a District of Columbia or Montgomery County, where they have a lot more staff that could handle an NGBS type of a program. We just don't have that here, so.
Yeah. No, it makes total sense. And actually, I do apologize. There was one thing, not just from your comments, but just more globally, that I think it's important to touch on, just for everyone's context here, which is timeline. I think understanding a timeline for this is, is important, because this is not delivering tomorrow. So looking at Phase One, right, that project is going to start lease-up and open end of summer, say, August, September. We should be complete with that project early next year, say, March. This project, you know, based on entitlements closing, et cetera, you're looking at sometime next year, right, that this thing is getting started. And then you've got, you know, a two-and-a-half-year till those units deliver. So now you're talking about mid to late 2024 with completion in 2025. So we're four to five years out from this project being complete. And I know we've got, you know, the West End Project, you've got the Washington and Broad Project. There may be some slight overlaps between these three coming online, but from Phase One's perspective, that, that will have been completed and leased up for, for a couple of years before this thing is, is coming online. So just anyways, that's just for global context, so you can think through how this, how this will evolve. This is not going to be quick.
Okay, Ms. Koma.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. I just have a couple of questions. One, I think in one of the renderings, there's a pedestrian path that's shown on the west side of the building. Can you talk a little bit about that? I don't remember if it was mentioned in the, in the presentation.
Having trouble following, if I'm, if I'm being honest.
There's a, in one of the renderings, on the west side of the building, like kind of in between the development and the party store, there is a, it looks like a pedestrian connection.
No, there, there, there shouldn't be. So Emily, can you go back to Slide Seven? That might be what we're referencing here.
Sorry, I'm looking at the renderings that were in the
Oh, oh, well, if you're, yeah, so the west side in between, there is not a pedestrian connection there. There is space. There is space that will be green, there will be grass planted between the two, but no, we are setting back from, from the property line.
Okay. And is it, is it accurate that the co-working space, is that entirely underground, apart from the smaller outdoor working area?
So
Is it two stories underground?
It's partially at grade, right? Because of the way the grade drops, you've got a level, you got a level up here, and then you've got a level here. You do have to go down to get into it, but it is at a grade. It's not going to be a completely buried basement environment. But yeah, just based on the way the plan works, you've got office on top, you've got the co-working below it.
Okay. And then I just wanted to echo Ms. Norlov's comments about accessibility. And one thing I noticed is that the retail alcoves, again, as they're shown in the, in the renderings right now, it looks like there are stairs to access those, and I would just, I encourage you to make sure that those can also be accessed by people in, who are handicapped, or who are using wheelchairs, or you know, or the elderly via ramps from the outside as well, not just the inside.
Yep.
And I wanted to echo Mr. Peterson's comments about creative uses of the roof to expand the green space. I think that would be terrific, and also expanding the open space for the public at the corner of West and Ellison. And of course, using native plants whenever possible in all of these contexts. And then the only other thing, oh, for retail uses, I just want to put a plug in for bakery, like Bread and Water. I don't know if you're familiar with that in Alexandria. I think it would be really great to have a real bakery in the city Falls Church. Not to impugn any other bakeries that are around, but.
No, that's great. That's, that's great. Feedback like that is, is much appreciated. And I mean, I do think that serves a, a very positive neighborhood use as well. So thank you. I, I can tell that we are in conversations with quite a few bakeries for Phase One as well. So there's
Oh, that's great news.
Yeah. We'll see, but yes.
And then the only other thing I'd request is if you could please keep the sidewalks accessible, you know, while construction is ongoing, because this is a a well-traveled route for kids who are trying to get to the middle, the middle and high school campus at the west end of the city, and, and many other people as well.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Okay, Ms. Weiss.
Thank you. I also, I just want to start off by telling staff that I think this process to get board and commission feedback early is, is really terrific, and I recognize that many of the boards and commissions haven't had a chance to officially discuss and describe their viewpoints, but it's been very helpful for me to hear from, from the members of the boards and commissions. So thank you for arranging this. I want to applaud the 12% ADU. I think that's a terrific gap that fell in our, our community, and I, and I applaud you taking that initiative. I do have some questions just on the unit mix of the overall residential. I think it's predominantly Residential. I think it's predominantly studios and one bedrooms. And I know in our, I think in our city as a whole, we have a gap in two and three bedrooms of affordable. So I just. Thinking about equity and access to our schools for lower income families. I just wanted to just state that as a concern or a question that I have. Are we, are we housing families? I wanted to flag that. I think lead gold is terrific. But I don't know if you were participating in the prior conversation in West Falls Church. It would be great to see this project prioritize energy efficiency. And really reduce the energy usage intensity of these projects. So I know you can get lead gold, lead points in a number of different ways. The city has a greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal. Climate change is occurring. So it would be terrific to see, you know, over the course of this building to really see you design this building to reduce energy use as much as possible. To that end, I also wanted to underline the many comments from, that we've heard tonight really related to climate change. So thinking about stormwater in particular. You know, if you look at chapter five of our comprehensive plan, there's some statistics in there about the increased situation that we're likely to see. So it would, you know, I'd like to see this building, you know, match what West Falls Church is doing, which is, I think, capturing over 10, you know, 10%. In addition to. The current regulated requirements. And I don't know how that relates to a 25 year storm, but we're, we're going to see more 25 year storms over the course of this building and 50 year storms today. I'd like to see more stormwater. I think that links nicely with some of the comments on trees, other comments on open space. And there is, was a comment on art as well. I just want to, you know, note that in our recently adopted public art addendum to the comprehensive plan, there's a principle in there. That underlines the connection of art with the connecting people with the natural environment. So there might be some creative ways to marry public art and green infrastructure to help this. Site become climate resilient, to capture more stormwater and to. Help mitigate heat island effect, which we're also likely to see increased. I wanted to just underline and draw together all the comments that we've heard tonight about. Designing this to be a client resilient and low emitting, low emitting site. So that was the bulk of my, my comments. I, I also had a question. I think the comment about showing the site in relation to neighboring sites is really important as well. The tapering to Ellison looked abrupt to me. I'm not an architect, but I was curious about what the perspective will look like from the neighbors on Ellison's. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback. Taking copious notes over here.
Very good. I don't see any other hands up from commissioners. And I would just, just to kind of. Give you my two cents and I guess we can sum up here. It's been a, it's been a good, a good discussion. I mean, overall, I mean, I, I think, you know, my concerns are, me, you know, you alluded to the, you know, the retail, the issue of, you know, dealing with the grade change on Southwest. You know, I am concerned about the viability of that retail. You know, I think, I mean, you mentioned the Byron, which is a good example. I mean, I think you're gonna, I mean, you know, I don't want to presume. You know, but I feel you're going to struggle to get good tenants, you know, I think. Combination of, you know, not being at grade and also, you know, not having obvious, you know, sort of. Parking. And so for that, you know, for that reason, I feel like, you know, and also just for street activation and to. You know, improve the, the, the condition along there. I mean, I would encourage you to look at options. I know you're dealing with grade. And so that was one concern I had. Also, on the Ellison Street side. You know, one thing I, you know, and I'm watching, you know, as your founders, as your other project is, you know, moving along quite, quite nicely along park. You know, I think one thing that I always thought, you know, could, you know, would, would even better as far as, you know, trying to. Blend into the single family detached neighborhood because it's, you know, it's always a tough transition to go from. You know, you know, the, the scale of what you're doing, you know, to single family detached, you know, R1B. And, you know, having entrances, I know what you're showing in the, in the facade, in the elevations, you're showing like sliding glass doors. I mean. Actually having residential entrances that open up. And I know your unit type, you know, how well it lends itself to that or not, but. The ability to have the ground floor units have entrances that come onto the street. You know, it activates the street. It again helps the transition. I mean, you know, I guess, I guess there's only, you know, kind of as, as of today, there's kind of one home that's directly across from you. You know, the, you know, maybe the guy with all the sobs, I think everyone knows that block because there's all those old classic sobs, whoever. You know, I don't know if you're gonna, you know, the guy's gonna want to park all the sobs now. Maybe he can make an arrangement with you to park the sobs, but. But, but anyhow, you know, but just as far as the, the, the relationship of, of your building. To, to that house and, and the other single family homes, you know, I, I, I feel like that's something to, to consider, to make it, if there's, that can work. You know, from a transportation perspective, I'm glad you talked about the phasing and, and, and of the signals, of the, of the signal. You know, I've always thought that, you know, wouldn't it have been great if, again, if South and Northwest Street could be aligned? You know, I, I don't know, you know, I think I brought that up on Founders Row One and kind of didn't really go anywhere. And I don't know if it really has, if it's really, if it's really feasible here, but, you know, obviously part of what makes that signal so difficult is the fact that it's not aligned. And so it's not really safe to have both, you know, both legs of West Street moving at the same time. And so it adds to the, to the, to the delay on Broad, you know, it's part of the reason why Broad, you know, back in pre-COVID times. You know, during the PM rush would typically back up, you know, all the way back to Don Byer sometimes, you know, at, at, at heading eastbound. But again, it's, you know, obviously if you can fix some of that through phasing of the signal, I mean, that may help, you know, you mentioned having both lefts go, go concurrently. But, you know, obviously, you know, if there was any way to fix the alignment issue. And perhaps that's already been looked at, I would encourage you to, to look at that and, and see what else could be, could be done. You know, to, to, to further help that, that situation. That's kind of all I guess I have at the moment, you know. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, one last thing. You know, you talked about obviously the setting back the building from your neighbor to the west. Obviously today, you know, the CBS, you know, is, you know, leaves like a few feet of like a dark kind of impenetrable alley, you know, in there. You know, you're leaving a little more room, but still, you know, being cognizant of, I think you're showing like 14 feet. So obviously, you know, if it's going to be, I don't know what the, there would be a path there or there would be, or it wouldn't be open to pedestrians or whatever, but if it would. Be open to pedestrians to make sure that that space is, you know, well lit, that it feels safe. Otherwise, it has the potential to be kind of like an alley and. And, you know, so again, I don't know, you know, it's, you know, probably not the most important part of all this, but it's one of those details on that side. You know, you know, we don't know, you know, for however long, you know, the neighboring can, you know, site will be as it is today. You know, just to make sure that, you know, it's, it's treated in a way that makes sense. It's not creating kind of a liability or, or an eyesore. So, yeah, so I think that was kind of all, all I had at, at the moment. And so. If there's, if they, I don't know if any other commissioners have anything else. I don't see any other hands up.
And Mr. President, if I may just, if I may just respond real quick, just for two points of clarity. So your, your point on the retail is well taken. I do think. There's been a thoughtful treatment to how we're dealing with the topography to make sure that's all very accessible with those outdoor retail promenades. But there's clearly will need to be, you know, we will need to study that. We will need to bring in a retail architect and make sure that that is accessible, activated, and that, that retail can be successful. Is it'll be, you know, a, a big part of our program. But more importantly, on the Ellison Street. So we learned a lot of lessons from Park Avenue. The reality is we have more space here to play with. So we are, if you're looking at the floor plan right now, actually, you can see the stoops. So we are going to have front door entrances so that these do look more townhomey. And then each of those like squares in, like the bigger squares, those are essentially like front lawns, if you will. So all of that will be green open space. It's not meant to be like. Public park open space like it is at the corner, but you will have stoops with like kind of front lawn townhome style elements, even though they're not townhomes. So it's, you know, we learned a lot from Park Avenue and we're trying to expand upon that and we have more space to work with here. So your points are well taken, but I did want to make, to, to let you know, we've, we've tried to think through that.
Okay, great. Now that, that, that's great to hear. I appreciate that. And obviously, I know it's in your interest to have your retail tenants do well. And so, you know, I know, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't intentionally try to set something up. So I, you know, I, I, I'm sure that, you know, there, there are ways to make it work. You know, obviously there are different reasons why some businesses do well and don't, you know, I was thinking of like at the Byron at the corner. You know, that there's a, that tenant's turned over several times over the years. There are probably many reasons for that. It's not always the retail physical layout, but, um. But yeah, so I know, I appreciate that, that response. And I'm glad, yeah, you know, honestly, maybe, maybe it's like the way, you know, it was shown in the elevation, but I do see now. And I'm looking at it, the stoops that you're showing there. And I think that really helps. There's a building, you know, just outside the city limits on South Street, you know, that. Again, backs up with townhouses, the single family residential just outside city limits. And they also, you know, incorporated that and I think it really works. And so, yeah, I'm glad to hear you reference like a townhome type of feel because then obviously I think is the ideal transition to, to the single family detached. So let's see. Okay, well, so with that, you know, I guess that, that's, that maybe is it for comments. I don't know, you know, staff, I think that's. I think all we kind of had programmed for this and then we're nearing kind of the end, end of the evening here and it's been a long night. So unless, you know, Mr. Stoddard, there's anything else. As far as, you know, closing this up, I think, I think we'd, we'd end the discussion here.
Yeah, this is it. Just, just to inform the commission on expected next steps for this application. What we've talked about in terms of scheduling future items, future applications, future iterations. The idea is for the applicant to now, you know, take the benefit of the comments. They've now got feedback from council, from the boards and commission, from planning commission, from staff. And so the expectation is that the applicant will go and, and prepare a second submission. And then I think that would get back to council would be the next stop for the application. And that would be after. Just coordinating applications, that would be after council takes final action on the West Falls Church project. Which is tentatively scheduled for late May or early June. That's for the West Falls project, West Falls Church project. So. This Founders Two application will probably be back on council's agenda, probably sometime in, in, in late June or. Hopefully not, but probably early July.
Great, great. Thank you, Paul. Okay, great. Well, with that, I guess, again, thank you to Mr. Muffler and the rest of his, his team. For, for providing us this, this kind of, you know, early look. We'll look forward as the year, as the rest of the year progresses to, to watching this progress, that the project progress and. And go through the process. And thank you also to the other board and commission members for coming out and, and joining us tonight. And I hope. You know, that this type of early, you know, look at these projects will be helpful for all of us on boards and commissions. And so with that, I guess. Thanks again, and, and we'll, we'll call tonight's meeting adjourned. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.